Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me?
Madam Chair, we hear you.
All right, are we ready?
I believe we are ready, yes.
Okay, well, the clock's not quite to nine o'clock, but I just wanted to make sure. Okay, I'm going to call to order the Lyon County Board of Commissioners. This is Thursday, October 20th, 2022, at 9:00 a.m. No action will be taken on, I'm sorry, action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendaized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Board of Commissioners convening as other boards. Members of the Board of County Commissioners also serve as the Liquor Board, Central Lion Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, and the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board. And during this time may convene as any of those boards is indicated on this or separately posted agenda. Note that this meeting might break for lunch between 11:30 and 1:30. And let me see, I got four seats filled, so please note that all commissioners are present with Commissioner Keller by Zoom. Next, we will be given the invocation by Mitch Forster of the Mason Valley Southern Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'm going to ask right after the invocation if Commissioner Gray could please lead us in the pledge right after.
Hey, let's pray together. Our Father in Heaven, we acknowledge you as our Creator, the Creator of heavens and earth, and the One with all wisdom and knowledge. And we call upon you for this meeting today. Brandish your wisdom and your knowledge of everything that we need to know to make the proper decisions. We do pray, Lord, that we will diligently hold to the Constitution of our country and never forget those who established it and those who have given their lives for our freedom over the years. And Father, we pray that our decisions today would go for the good of those that would come after us, kids and grandkids and on. So we just thank you, Lord, that you hear our prayer and that you answer us according to your will and your good pleasures. And we do pray these things in the name of Jesus, your Son. Amen.
Amen.
I mean, the pledge, ladies, but again, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Thank you, everyone. And thank you, Mr. Forster, for your invocation. Public participation, no action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendaized. It is anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during this agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda action item, but before the board takes any action. Do I have anybody for public participation at this time?
I see one in chambers. Please step up to the podium.
Yeah, please step up and state your name for the record and sign in if there's a sign-in sheet there.
My name is George Robinson, for the record. I'll sign it when I'm done here.
No problem.
I've been coming to these meetings about 12, 14 years now. Some of them are good, some of them are bad, some of them are exciting, and some of them are terrible boring. But I've never come to these meetings and had so many people complain about the house down on Palomino Drive. They've been doing it for years and nothing's done about it. So I've done a little research, went down there myself the other day to look at it. It's a mess. The people in the neighborhood say it's a mess. But the biggest problem is the person that owns the property is a relative of one of the good old boys in town. So there isn't much that gets done about it. I've had this problem before when I went to complain about one of the good old boys plundering an estate across the road from and nothing was done about that either. They circle the wagons and you get screwed. Nothing happens. I got a commissioner to sign in with me and he called me a day before we were supposed to meet and said, I can't meet with you. They told me not to get involved. So that's what's happening here. And nobody wants to take it on. I feel sorry for them people. It's a mess. Out on Bonanza Lane, pretty close to where I live. A guy had about 50 cars, a couple of dozers, a fuel truck, a crane that he'd gathered up. It took him two years and they got rid of all of them. These people have been fighting that house down on Palomino Lane for 10 years. So I, I think, and I firmly believe that if it was in your neighborhood, something would be done, but it's not in your neighborhood, so nobody cares. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else for public comment?
Would you, Madam Chair? Hello, I'm Travis Peak. I'm owner, president of Peak Brothers Construction. I appreciate you as time. Unfortunately, I didn't wish to be here. I was conflicted, to be honest with you, this morning. My sons are at the actor finals this morning roping and instead I have to be here to deal with something that I don't feel like I should have to deal with. And unfortunately, this has been going on. If you don't know, we have a contract with Lyon County to your sewer lift station in, or by Dayton. It's about a $3.6 million contract is what it is. We had actually been low by, I'll say approximately, can't remember the exact numbers, but around $500,000 is what we were low on that project. We bid that project in September, in September of 2021. The, as you know, during those times, at that time, is when fuel was just skyrocketing. Everything was going up. Everything was moving up. Our suppliers were giving us notices on a daily basis or sometimes weekly. It was starting out monthly, then it went to weekly, that they couldn't hold prices more than, you know, it was starting out a month, then it went to a week and going from there. So after we rewarded this project at the end of November and or well, it's actually November 4th is when we were awarded it after bid, which was over a month from the time when we bid the project. From the time that we actually got contract was almost at the end of the contract or end of the month. By the time we got some middles, we can't even buy, buy stuff because it's specially made stuff. We have to give some middles out. We did not get approved some middles in which I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, which one were the other, because sometimes this is the things that happen. And when you have a project of this type of magnitude, it takes a while for things to happen. But you're talking over four months by the time we had. So by that time, I submitted a change order because our suppliers, we had granted, we have over a million dollars worth of material on this project. Over a million dollars and our suppliers couldn't hold the project because it affected them. You know, you can, you can know what the price is at that time, but you cannot know what the price is at a month later. And we've never dealt with anything like this. By the time it was all said and done, it was $67,000. By that time, fuel had gone up a ton. Fuel had gone up, everything had gone up. I sent a letter to him and basically said that, guys, I understand everybody's hurting during this time. I sent to your utility director. And I said, everybody's hurting during this time. It's, I'm not going to charge you for the fuel. I'll take care of all that. Not going to change order, you guys. And I want you guys to understand there's a $300,000 force account on this job for incidentals and
I, I'm sorry, I mean, this is public comment, so I can only let you go the three minutes.
Well, I've been on you guys' agenda for over a month. And I've been
Well, at this time, we can't go past the three minutes because we don't let anybody else. And we cannot discuss this under public comment. So I appreciate you coming in and spending your time, but I have to ask you to get with our county manager.
I have tried to get with your county manager.
Okay, we cannot discuss this at this time. I apologize.
Well, it's funny because your name has actually come up on this whole thing and to be, to be honest with you. So, Vida, I want you to know that, that your, your name specifically came out that they would not allow stuff like this because
Okay, we're, we're into a discussion that I cannot allow under public comment. We are bound by open meeting. I'm going to have to ask you to step away, please.
Thank you very much.
Andrew, if you could, please take a note that maybe offline, we can address this.
Will do.
Thank you very much. Do I have anybody else for public comment? Anybody on Zoom that you can see, Andrew?
I don't see any.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to review and adoption of the agenda. Is there any changes that I am not aware of? Andrew.
I don't believe so. The only thing is our time certain is running a little bit late. I guess there was an accident on the AD.
Right, I, I knew about that one. Okay. All right, at this time, can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
A second, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to approve, review, adopt the agenda. Any further discussion? Public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Number seven, presentation of awards. Andrew, do we have anything today?
Nothing today, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Attended the friendly first ever Furly Boys and Girls Club celebration teen dinner last night. And it was very well done. I wanted to give a shout out to Mike Worm from the Trucking Metals Boys and Girls Club and Oscar Aguilera, I believe, from the Furly Boys and Girls Club for, for having a really nice ceremony. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobson. Commissioner Hockaday.
No comments at this time.
Commissioner Gray.
Yeah, just, as most of you probably already know, we suffered another loss in Dayton with some historic buildings. Seems like our Old Town Dayton is quickly burning away and it was just, you know, tragic loss of some historic buildings. So that and looking forward to the Library Foundation Mass Grid Bowl this weekend.
There you go. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very briefly, I attended the NACO Legislative Committee last Friday. They are working on some of the, the NACO bills that have been submitted, working with LCB. Some of the other BDRs that are out there that they brought up. That they put on their radar and a caution here, you really can't tell what a BDR is until the bill is actually introduced and the language is there. But a couple of ones that they put in there was a, there's a BDR that dealing with tax on digital goods. And then there's also a BDR allowing for marijuana grows in your home. So what, once the, once the bills were actually filed and language is in there, we'll know more about those. And I do want to make another comment. I understand that Commissioner Jacobson might have received an award at the Boys and Girls Club last night. So congratulations, sir, well earned.
Thank you, Commissioner Henderson.
Okay. You know, I don't have anything at this time, so. County Manager. Mr. Haskin.
All right, Andrew Haskin, Endrum County Manager for the record. So I wanted to provide you an update. I have been working on the Mount House Community Center a bit. Had a really good positive conversation with Chief Harvey on that. And so I've got Facility Director Homestead working on a proposal that we'll be bringing back at some point when that's done. If the king's worked out on that, so we're, we're making progress there. I'm working to establish a code enforcement task force to better address some of the more challenging cases such as Tony Palomino and some of the other ones around around the community. So that is something that, that we are working on. The task force will include code enforcement, the District Attorney's Office, the Sheriff's Department, and Human Services. So I'm pretty excited about that. We had a kind of a initial meeting, just kind of just discuss the structure of the task force and kind of how we're going to approach some of this stuff. So I look forward to bringing that forward at some point and I'm pretty excited about it. I think we're going to make some good progress in some of these projects, you know, to address some of them. Some of these projects are really, really complex. So their, their combination of code enforcement, law enforcement, and human services. So there's multiple issues going on. And they are, you know, they just, they take time. They weren't created overnight and they take time to, to get resolved. But we are making some progress on some of the, some of the bad, bad code enforcement cases out there. So I just want to make the board aware of that. The emergency manager position is now posted, so we look, really look forward to filling that position. That's going to be a big help. I've been working with Shayla. Shayla and I have met several times in the last two weeks. She's been getting me up to speed on human services and human services issues. So I really appreciate Shayla's help on that. I really look forward to working with them further. She's got an amazing team and they did some really, really great work, so. I, I really appreciate that. And then Commissioner Gray, you touched on the Fox Hotel in Dayton. My understanding is the cause is still under investigation. But I did want to provide an update. I believe that they will be tearing down at least a facade of the building today. I know our department's been working with, the building department has been working with them and I've got a couple of inspectors out there to make sure that everything's done safely with the windstorms that are coming up this weekend. There was some concern about safety issues with it being right next to the street and the power lines and everything. So that, you're absolutely right. That is a huge loss for this store town, town. And we hope that the property owners were to rebuild. And with that, I, that is my update. Does anybody have any questions? All right.
Sorry, I was on mute. Any questions for Mr. Haskin? Okay, thanks, Andrew. Okay, we're going to move on to elected official reports. Do I have any elected officials in chambers?
Madam Chair, Steve Roy was here and he stepped out a few minutes ago, so I'm not sure what's going on. We may need to circle back to him.
Okay, we can always come back. Any elected officials online? Scroll through here real quick, make sure I'm not missing anybody. Okay. I'm going to go to appointed official reports.
Guess who's standing here waiting to get up there?
Mr. Foley?
Yep.
I can't even see him and I knew.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Couple of things to, to bring up to you. First of all, we don't, I don't even want to think about it, but it's that time of year to start. I'm looking at scheduling budget meetings for the upcoming session. And traditionally, we have done it the first Wednesday in April. However, last year we moved that to the next week because it was spring break for the school. And so for those county employees that had children and were going on vacations, we moved it to the next week. We moved it to the next Wednesday. My proposal this year is that we move it to the next Monday. That gives enough time for us to get to the Department of Taxation without a rush and make sure that all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, all that fun stuff. And so that would be Monday, April 10th. Would you please just contact me individually if that causes any issues for any of you? So that's the first one. The second one is Pool Pack is putting on or proposing a training on July 20th. And they're wondering if we would have any participation from our board. And it would have a number of different items. Think of it as a kind of a mini conference, kind of like we've done at NACO in the past. Give cover governance, open meeting law, ethics, pool pack coverages, their claims management, financial overviews, HR, risk management services, and ELEARN. So if any of you would be interested in attending that, please let me know as well. And I will forward that information on to Pool Pack that there may be interest for that conference if they hold it. In addition to that, the justice complex remodel, there's an item on your agenda today which we'll talk about. And that is to change it so we don't do it in phases and remove the district court and have them come use the upstairs at the courthouse next door and use these chambers when we're not using them. And we would just coordinate calendars together. I just wanted to let you know that that's what they're planning on doing. So this room will probably be very busy. And we'll be careful to make sure we have our calendar stuff on hard enough ahead of time that they can calendar around with you. And then I will be emailing out quarterly financial statements for June 30th and September 30th, sometime next week. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Foley?
What was that? The pool pack, you had a tentative date?
They, they proposed the day of January 20th. January 20th. If I said July, I apologize.
Say January.
It's June.
January 20th?
January 20th.
Thank you. So what's going on in July that you got my, got your mind on July?
That's usually why I take vacations. That's my time. What was the question? It's going to be in Reno. More information to come. If, if there's enough interest to hold it, if there's not, then we don't need to worry about it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Foley, can you just send out an email to all of us on that?
I can do so, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, appointed officials. Any other appointed officials in chambers?
Madam Chair, Mr. Ry, turn to the room.
Oh, Mr. Ry, did you have anything today for under elected officials?
He has nothing.
Okay, thank you. Back to appointed officials in chambers, anyone else? Not seeing anyone? Okay, how about online? Mr. Burkett, Mr. Homestead, anybody left there need? Need anything today?
Yes. Thomas Renner, Smith Valley Advisory Board.
I'm, hang on, I'm not quite to advisory boards yet. I'm still on appointed officials, so give me one second.
I thought we were appointed.
Well, but your advisory board, so you're close. You're next in line. Hang on. Again, any appointed officials, please raise your hand or speak up. Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Mr. Renner, Advisory Board reports.
Yes, ma'am. At our last meeting, we had a resolution, Lyon County's number 22-25. Commissioners Lyon County establishment of the Smith Valley Citizens Advisory Board. And we tabled that as it does not include all the citizens of Smith Valley. Your map does not include south of us and this, to the state line. And there's a lot of people living down there and, and the verbiage you have and the resolution basically would exclude these people from being members of our advisory board. And we think that that is something that should be corrected. And that's why I'm bringing it to your attention to see if we can get the map corrected and get these people included in the information that needs to be passed on to the commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Renner. Yes, I would advise that maybe you get with Aaron Lopez, maybe even the county interim county manager and see, you know, what's going on with the map. It, it wouldn't be the first time we, we had a map that wasn't quite right. So if you could please get with them on that and see what corrections need to be made.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other advisory board reports today? Not seeing any hands. Okay. Moving on, consent agenda. Action will be taken on all items. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action and without an extensive hearing. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. Our consent agenda looks like it's from 12A to 14E. So is, is any request to poll or hear separately?
Madam Chair, since there's no corrections being offered, I'll make a motion that we approve a consent agenda, items 12 through 14E as presented.
Second.
Thank you. I got a motion and a second to approve any further discussion.
Yes, I have a comment.
Commissioner Hockaday.
Just going through the numbers, which I usually do. I was quite amazed that Human Services has basically brought in $662,000. Actually, to the dollar, $662,621 with a match of $61,593 from the county. To me, that's amazing. The amount of money that they bring in and grants is substantial and I just want to commend them on a fantastic job.
Yeah, but it's less than last year.
Okay, always get, always be negative there.
No, 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 they do. They do a great job. That's Shayla and her team. They're awesome.
Super job. I just, you know, I kept looking at the amount of money that was coming in. I said, this is just phenomenal. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Hockaday for pointing that out. They do do a phenomenal job over there. Any other discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Regular agenda. I'm going to jump forward real quickly. We're under sheriff is not going to be able to stay in that way. I don't forget back to it. So I'm going to go to 16B for possible action, approve revisions to the Lyon County's at-home vehicle storage policy.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County, Endrum County Manager for the record. Yeah, so I asked 16B to be put on the agenda. This was an, an issue that was brought to my attention by the JPO office. They had requested take home vehicles for They had requested take home vehicles for for JPO officers that live outside of the county. When we were doing the research in this, we found that the Sheriff's Department was already doing this. Um, it was something that they had, you know, in talking with sheriff, there was a misunderstanding. They had put it in their policy, but because the vehicles are owned by Lyon County, the they fall under our policy, which does not permit it. So we, you know, and looking at the issue because it's something that's already been in practice for the last two years. I'm recommending that we go ahead and change our policy to reflect what's been, what's been happening. You know, the fear is that if we were to go ahead and take that away at this point, then there would be that we run the risk of losing some employees, which also has a cost. I can bring Mr. Foley up to talk a little bit about the financial impact and the kind of the background.
So is this gonna include out of state also?
No, it was. So I believe the policy includes just the adjoining counties. So it doesn't include. Okay, yeah, so I'm sorry. Let me back up. It includes all the adjoining counties to Lyon County. Um, and it also has 100 mile radius with it as well.
Okay, so we're not, because I, the way I understood the last policy was that they were to take it, they could take the vehicle to the nearest facility, you know, county line, and then swap vehicles there. And that has just fallen out of practice? Or did at some point we actually changed that? Or did just fall out of practice?
It fell out of practice and and so this would change that. What? So there are some, some employees with Sheriff's Department that have to take the vehicle home?
Well, they just, yeah, they dispatch out the driveway.
Yeah, exactly. So that that happens in case they get called back in. But also if they have a canine, they would have to have to do that as well and then then swap. So I, and I know the Sheriff's Department's here, I'll let them speak to that, but.
Is there any kind of mileage radius or anything that we're looking at? Or is it just adjoining counties or?
So we put 100 miles radius from the, from the county seat. So most of them, most of them wouldn't be driving to the county seat. So, but that was, we had to put a number on it somehow. And that's what we did. So I think that would cover it, all the existing.
Yeah, given the state of affairs, I think it's not a, not a bad thing.
Joshua Lyon County Controller of the Record, just to give the board a little bit of history, we rewrote the policy in the early, that was probably 2011, 2012 timeline. And the existing language was put in there where there was no county vehicles being taken outside of the county. It would just be left at the nearest location within the county. The purpose for that was to pull, first of all, we had commissioner saying, I pass county vehicles going outside the county every night. Why are we sending vehicles to Reno, to Gardnerville, to Carson, those type of things? The, for commuting purposes, the second one is we had a, an accident on one of those vehicles. Probably about 2011 or 2012 as well. And the question is, is what was that car even doing in Reno in the first place to be in that accident? So in an effort to control costs, and we were in the middle of the Great Recession at the time, and in an effort to control costs, this policy was, was put in to avoid commuting, which is the majority of those costs, to reduce fuel costs, to reduce vehicle costs and vehicle maintenance costs. And so that was, that's the history of that. As far as liability, there is an increased liability whenever you have additional miles driven on a vehicle, whether it's in county or out of county. And so that was part of the discussion at the time. My understanding is the sheriff two years ago wrote into his personnel policies, I don't know if the personal policies, into the sheriff policies to allow take home vehicles for them at the time and moving forward. We, I wasn't aware of that. Uh, JPO came about, not quite a year ago, they had an applicant for a position that's been vacant for approximately last year. And he said, I have someone who works for the state, has a take home vehicle, lives in Fallon. We would like to get a one-time exception so that that first, our full-time exception. If not that, for the entire department, a one-time exception. And I said, our policy doesn't allow it. He goes, well, you have the authority under, as risk manager, to authorize an exception. I looked at it and I'm like, I'm not, over time, we had a number of discussions. I'm like, I'm not comfortable doing an exception. I feel like this is a board discussion. I'm comfortable doing exception for a one-time off type of situation where you've got an emergency that's going to be happening, or someone lives in Reno and they're going to be going to training in Reno and then need their vehicle in Reno for whatever that training is, authorizing for that, but not for a permanent type of situation. So we brought that to the board. The challenges that we're having at this moment, from an accounting standpoint, risk management standpoint, my answer would be, this doesn't make any sense to us. From a human resources perspective, it's a whole different discussion. And that discussion is some of our surrounding agencies, Carson, Douglas, as examples, allow for take home cars for their law enforcement personnel. And so they're providing a benefit that we don't. Admittedly, we probably have a farther commute for most of their people doing coming in from outside. I mean, we're bringing people into the North Valleys or Gardenville or Polville, or those type of places. But when you're looking at comparables, you have that. And when you're looking at recruitment and retention, that can be problematic if one agency provides it and another does not. In addition to that, approximately 25% of the sheriff's one staff lives out of county. Right now, they're telling me it's approximately 10 vehicles that they've authorized to go out of county. The county manager brought up that for K nine unit, they take care of those dogs at home. That's a concern if we follow the policy, they're not allowed to be a K nine unit if they live outside the county under current policy. So there are a number of of issues here with that. I put an estimated financial cost based on actual locations of employees living outside the county to the nearest county location to them. And the number of days they work on average per week subtracted out leave from that, took a time as a mileage rate. So in theory, it accounts for fuel, maintenance and cost of the vehicle over time and put that in for both the sheriff's office and juvenile probation. And then also this would apply to utility staff who are on call that may live in Carson City but work in Dayton. Um, and when they're on call currently, they leave that vehicle at the nearest location, I believe it's Mount House. And they come in and pick it up and go to work, but they would also, under the proposed new policy, be able to take that home. So from in summary, from an HR perspective, it makes a lot of sense. From a financial perspective, it doesn't make as much sense. Risk management, it doesn't make as much sense. Um, so we brought it to the board, saying county managers recommend we really make this change. I just want to present the board with, with all the discussion that's been had around the parties.
So given this day and age, and not a whole lot we can do to make especially our law, law enforcement officers' lives, you know, better financially, I think it's a, you know, I think it's an easy thing we can do. I mean, from a personnel policy, you know, especially if they have to return back to work. I mean, they're all subject to return back to work, you know, out of their driveway. But one of the questions I have, and you're the, you're the financial guy, is are there any tax applications for them once they leave the county, their county service area and on their route home, being they're provided a county vehicle and fuel at that point?
So the IRS and, and I have to thank Eric Malasty for writing all of this, because he did make it so it's in accordance with IRS guidelines.
Good job.
It's limited to people who are responsible for response in the case of emergencies, which under the IRS guidelines allow you to do that, even if you use it for commuting use. As an example, if I were to take it home or district attorney or some other one that's not law enforcement under the IRS definition, uh, then you have to track mileage and you have to write down, here are the amount of miles that I spent on it on this state of our business. Here are the miles that I spent that were commuting. And then we have to calculate on the payroll side, how much of that vehicle usage was personal and we have to add that to their W2. We currently are not set up to do that, but that answers your question.
And then the other part of the question is, and it's a risk management question, family members and vehicles, you know, if a deputy, you know, God forbid, wants to pick his kid up on the way, you know, from school or daycare or something on the way home, is that going to be permissible under the policy? And I'm not saying it shouldn't be one way or the other. I'm just saying it's a question that comes to my mind and needs to be addressed.
So we are addressing at this point just the take home provision, the regular policy, the regular policy is a lot bigger than the take home piece. But the regular policy does not allow for personal children, spouses, what have you to be in the vehicle. Now, I have seen personal children, spouses being in sheriff's vehicles have brought it up to previous sheriffs in the past, maybe even current sheriff and brought it to their attention. I don't know what happened after that, if they turn a blind eye or if they actually enforce it. But it is not allowed under policy for the precisely the same, the reason that you brought up from risk management perspective. You get in a fatal accident and have a whole family in there, that's probably.
Thanks, Josh.
Any other questions for Mr. Foley?
Uh, yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, if I may.
Yeah, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you. So we pay for the gas. We're putting increased mileage on the vehicle, so our maintenance costs go up or the frequency goes up.
Yes.
Yeah, I I have a problem with this outside the county. I really do. I can, I can understand inside the county because it, it helped me out here. So the, the reason that this is allowed is because, especially with law enforcement, they can be called back at any time. So we want them to be able to respond quickly.
So that is correct. That's my understanding.
Okay, 100 miles isn't quick. I'm just saying.
I have.
A hundred.
The reason why we chose 100 miles, just so you know, would be to include all of the existing employees. And let's just say someone works in the North Valleys and or lives in the North Valleys in Reno, works in either Dayton or Fernley, but at some point may be reassigned to Earrington or Smith Valley, because that's the sheriff's perspective. We don't want to get into a legal situation where the sheriff moves their duty station. And now they have to leave the county car somewhere where everyone else doesn't have to. So it could set up the case for disparate treatment and cause a lawsuit.
Yeah, I, I understand that. And I appreciate that. Like I, I don't have any problem in the county. I have more of a concern vehicles going outside the county. Um, the, the canine situation, I think that could be an exception since there's an additional duty to care for the, for the animal. But that, that's, that's just my thoughts.
Any other commissioner questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Jacobson. Do we have? We obviously have staff called in outside of their workday, correct?
Absolutely.
So let's say they're called in on their, their off Friday, they cut, they're called in Saturday. They get in an accident in their own vehicle coming in. I guess I don't understand how, what, what the motivation would be for officers to come in and help out outside of their regular workday.
So if they get, if they're responding to a call, that may be a situation where they're being called in, or even if they're in a, their own personal vehicle, that we potentially could have liability in that situation. However, when they're commuting to work, the rest of the days on their normal schedule, if they get in an accident on their way to work or a way home, then it's out and they're in their personal park, the county is in no way liable for that particular situation. It's strictly on those callback situations. One other thing I failed to mention, it's not just canine units that they're concerned with. Part of it, the sheriff has brought up concerns about SWAT and detectives being able to have take home vehicles as well. And so tho- those were items that you want to make sure we're aware of.
I have just a couple more items. Chairman Keller, if I may.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, so just for curiosity, what's the starting pay for a officer here in Lyon County?
I would have to look. I don't know off the top of my head. Eric, do you have it? Approximately $52,000 plus uniform allowance and.
Right. I guess, I guess the, where I was going with that question is we may have trying to bring in some young officers. Maybe they're freshly married, wife, kid. What motivate, if they can't find housing in Lyon County, what motivation, if they, I mean, they may be a one-vehicle family and they're leaving that vehicle parked away from the house. I, I don't, I'm just trying to look at it at all angles too, as far as recruitment, retention. Um, I think we have a real opportunity here to shoot ourselves in the foot and become short-staffed. So just some things that I was thinking of when I was doing that. Um, and then do we ever assist outside of Lyon County, neighboring counties?
I believe that is that we do.
So they would drive then to the county line. I mean, I, I think we can think of a ton of scenarios where this is, this policy does and doesn't make sense. I'm gonna air just kind of my line of thinking. I'm gonna air on the side of retention and and keeping, keeping our officers or and trying to recruit. If other counties are doing this, I mean, find the sheriff from Douglas or Carson and they offer this and we don't. Or you don't think I'm gonna dangle that in front of, in front of recruits and in front of current deputies that are trained in Lyon County? I, I, I think the cost of this is probably we, we should probably do an analysis as far as retention and recruitment well above and beyond some gas in the tank and an occasional oil change. Um, my line of thinking. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, any other commissioner questions?
I have a comment. Yeah, one of the things we have to realize is that we're looking at public safety. The deputies have all the equipment they need in their cars. They sign in as soon as they get to the county line, which means that they're ready to go if there's an emergency. If they get called in, they're ready to move on anything because they can talk to dispatch. They can talk to the other patrol officers. If they're in their private car, they don't have those type of communication facilities. So I look at this as, as basically adding to our, our safety in the county because the deputies know what's going on as soon as they get in their vehicle.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I.
Madam Chair, one more. Sorry, this Commissioner Jacobson again. And, and that, I guess, so when they leave these vehicles at the county line, is it in a garage? Is it outside?
So our vehicles are, it depends on the facility. Most facilities for the sheriff's office have Finston parking. Now, we're in the process, we're carrying the one currently because the gate hasn't been functional, but they're, they're fixing that. But for the most part, uh, they are in Finston.
So their gun is left in the vehicle? Their shotgun, their mace, their billy club, whatever. I mean, I'm, I'm being a little bit facetious when I say it that way. I understand, but it just seems like I, I don't know that. And, and it may not be parked in a garage at their house. I get that. But at least they have the opportunity to take out um, some of those items that if it was broken into may cause, lead to a mess. So thank you, Madam Chair, sorry.
Thank you. Um, I believe I have Chief Smith on.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Commissioner, I have one more question.
Oh, Commissioner Henderson.
Because, um, Commissioner Jacobson just, just brought up a good point. So I have a question. So if a county vehicle is outside the county and gets broken into and things are stolen from it, does the operator of the vehicle bear the responsibility? Or is that just, especially if it was negligence? Vehicle was left unlocked or parked in an insecure area? Or are we getting into the weeds too far?
You know, I think that would be something you'd want to talk with, with the district attorney on. When you're talking about negligence and those type of things, I mean, it, it's risk management. If it's, if there's no negligence involved, absolutely the officer's not that type of situation. But if there's negligence, that's a whole different discussion I'd rather not get into in this.
But there is an understanding though that, that they are responsible for the vehicle and to bring it and, and all the, all the stuff in it. And it's their duty to protect it as best, best they can.
Again, if we can just stay on the, the other items. That may be accurate, but I don't want to discuss it.
I'd like to make a motion.
Well.
Chief Smith.
I, I have two other people that I believe that wanted to speak real quick, if you don't mind. But I can come right back to you, Dave, if you don't mind. Um, Chief Smith, I believe you had a comment and I believe, um, undersheriff Kilgore. Under Sheriff Kilgore is also there in chambers that wanted to speak, so. Uh, Mr. Smith, if you could, please, uh, give us your comments. I can't see you, so I got a black screen up there, so let's look at your hand.
I'm sorry, ma'am. This is Eric Smith, Chief Juvenile Probation Officer, Lion County. Um, so I don't wanna bore the board with, I mean, you've all touched on a lot of really good points that. Come across all of our minds when we talk about this policy and, you know, bad actors. Uh, employees that are negligent are dealt with pretty swiftly, especially in my agency, and I'm. Pretty sure Frank, uh, absolutely addresses those issues the same. Um, there, there's a multitude of scenarios where you talk about work outside the county, especially within juvenile probation. Once your child's adjudicated and placed under our supervision, wherever that child lives within the state of Nevada. We're still responsible. So, for example, just Friday, we're gonna be transporting a kid to Las Vegas. We're constantly outside of Lion County, uh, in our needs in. We're on call twenty-four seven. More often than not, these responses happen at two, three, one AM. Retention recruitment's an issue. I mean, you guys have really touched on the vast majority of the issues that surround this. Recruitment has been a huge issue for my agency. I have been a year and I've been unable to fill, um, a spot. Um, should this hiring right at this point not go through, I'm still, uh, kinda left. Possibly still not hiring an officer at this point, and I have one out on maternity leave. We're extremely shorthanded. We need every officer we can. Um, our slowed response time affects the sheriff's department. Um, and then it's a trickle effect, and you talk about citizens not getting, um, officers on scene in a timely manner and. It, it can go from there. So, if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Under Sheriff Kilgore, did you have something today?
Um, no, I was just here to answer questions. I think everything that was, uh, spoken here today. Probably addressed a lot of those questions. You know, the biggest thing for us, like, everybody's talking about is recruitment and retention. And response to the public, and I think, um, this vehicle policy that we're currently operating under. Um, helps us in that aspect on all levels. We don't, uh, we don't have the luxury of an eight-to-five scenario. We're twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, so. Um, the quicker we can get response, the quicker we can get people called out to a, an emergency. Without the delay of having to go to a substation to pick up a vehicle to go back, that maybe the direction that they, they came from. It is, uh, is a time waster sometimes. Thank you.
Madam Chair, one more. Item that I wrote down on this other page, if I may, um. I'm not sure our police officers wanna be living next door to. Someone that they cuff and stuff, so to speak. I, I think from a, from their safety standpoint, they're, um, it may be not theirs. It may be their spouse or whatever. But they may not wanna live necessarily in the community that they're arresting folks. Um, their kids may not wanna be going necessarily to school. With kids of someone that was arrested. I, I, I can't tell people how to think, but. But I do know that that may be an issue as well. And I think a very legitimate one. And so. You know, with that, and, and as we get to winter, uh, so they're driving from their house. To the outdoor parking lot. They start their car, their car's frosted over. I mean. I, I don't know. I, I don't, I don't think that that system is built for. For, uh, quick, uh, arrival times. I know that. We talked about, well, a hundred miles away isn't very quick. Well. I would think that the hundred miles is an exception. Uh, uh, I don't think we're talking a hundred miles here. Maybe in a rare case, but for the most part, I, I think that would be what I would consider an exaggeration. Um, and, and not something that I'm gonna hang my hat on as the rule. So, I, I just think there's a lot of reasons here why. They had way outweigh. Um, and right now, everyone sees the price of gas and, and what, I mean. It's, you know, we've. I think we'll weather that, but it, and at the end of the day, I think we've gotta. We've gotta move forward with this. Thank you.
Okay, so, being the only commissioner that hasn't spoken, I wanted to point out something. When we're talking about the hundred miles. It's not like it's a hundred miles from the county line. It actually says a hundred miles. From the county seat. So, that's from Yarrington, you know, and I could see where a hundred miles. Could, you know, if they live in North Reno, beyond, whatever. It, it could be a hundred miles. But that's from the county seat. Um, if they're just trying to get to Fernley, or if they're out the other direction, or they're just trying to get to Smith Valley, or whatever. Um, yeah, it's gonna be less than a hundred miles.
Madam Chair, with that too, if, if I'm the sheriff. And I'm looking to retain staff and I've got someone that lives in Reno, I'm not gonna reassign them to Smith Valley. Um, uh, the, I mean, staff morale and mission accomplished go hand in hand. Unless I'm trying to run someone off. I'm gonna keep them in the closest location possible.
Hey, Commissioner Jacobson, I absolutely appreciate, uh, your passion there, but I was trying to give my comments. So, with that being said, it was also mentioned about, you know, bad actors and, uh, being a commissioner back in two thousand eleven and twelve. Um, I really remember this whole discussion and, and it was, it was due to some bad actors. Public perception and, and a lot of other things. Um, like Mr. Foley pointed out, an accident, um, you know, there, there was a lot of things that was brought into question at the time. But I am actually, you know, a hundred percent behind, um, this change. And, and the reason for that is this, in this day and age, and as we have grown in this county. Um, the sheriff's department has become more spread out. Very limited on resources. And, you know, if we've got officers that are at home and need to come in under an emergency situation, I, God forbid, I wouldn't wanna have to wait for their. Personal vehicle to be drove wherever the county sheriff's vehicle was. Uh, to be on site. Um, I, I would rather that, you know, they, they, they just respond. So, um, with, with that, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm one hundred percent behind this. And I do believe that Commissioner Hockaday had a motion that he wanted to get out there.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion to approve revisions to Lion County's at-home vehicle storage policy.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Now, I'll go back to further comment. Anybody for further comment? Commissioner Jacobson, would you like to add any further comment at this time?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Uh, now I'm gonna go to public comment. Do I have anybody in chambers for public comment? Andrew, do I have any hands on Zoom?
No one in chambers, no one on Zoom.
Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, uh, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries.
They can all collectively, uh, breathe a sigh of relief now.
Okay, it's only tens. We're not there yet. We've done consent to ten. Yeah, right. So, we're gonna go back to item fifteen A. For presentation only, status update on American Rescue Plan Act funding, ARPA allocations and spending. I'm assuming that's Mr. Foley.
Josh Bully, Lion County Council, for the record. I was gonna get back to my office for this. Commissioner, uh, Gray requested that we, we go through an update, so I put together a list. I put it in fine print, so you couldn't see it. I'm just. But it's like, yeah, it's, it's a good sized list, but I'll just go through each one alone.
I may be able to save you time if you wanna go through each one of them. My question was, and we can just do it by, by exception. Are there any that we, that doesn't look like we're gonna be able to expend the money or any that we should move some funding around? Or any that, I just wanted to do a status check. I, I mean, that's all we need, I think, and I think it'll be easier on you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. If we can go that direction. So, at this point, I don't believe we have any issues with spending the money. Or the money and the right amount of time. Uh, if we get to that point as we go down, we can always use it for other purposes of the county. We get to. You know, another year and a half from now, we're like, oh, shoot, this isn't gonna work. We can revisit it, but. In answer to your question, I think we'll get on all of this.
Okay, yeah, I was just thinking if there's something that we're not gonna be able to execute or for the right funding that we could look at. You know, the tennis court in Smith Valley or the Mount House Community Center, somewhere where we can ship some of the money where we cut. So, thank you. I appreciate that and. Sorry you had to go through all that. I just, uh, wanted to make it easy on you.
Thank you. And, and that's a good exercise. I've been, I've been hounding them all, but just. Trying to make sure that they're all going in the right directions.
Yeah, the last thing I think any of us wanna see is, you know, have to return any of that money because it wasn't executed.
I agree. And just so the board is aware, the Boys and Girls Club, uh, is going to ask, and I have it on your next agenda. To revise their subrecipient agreement so they can use it for operational costs as well. Not increasing the dollar amount, just what they can use it for because of how strict the federal procurement guidelines are. Um, on their construction and, like, that doesn't make a lot of sense for what we're doing right now, and so. I, I'm like, well, it is eligible for this. We can take it back to our board and see if the board agrees to allow. Use for early childhood, which is one of the allowed uses on the. Thank you. Just a heads up on.
Uh, any other questions? I'm sorry, any other Commissioner questions?
I don't believe so.
Okay, I, I thought I heard somebody try to talk when I did, so I was like, oh. All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Foley. All right, so that was fifteen A. I am going to ask for a quick break. One of us needs to run down the hall. So, uh, give us five minutes, three minutes, five, four minutes, whatever you guys need. What do you think? Okay, we'll take five. Okay, everybody's back. Gonna move on to item fifteen B for possible action, approve a contract with Paul Haven Architect LLC in the amount of forty-eight thousand. To modify the construction documents for the District Court remodel expansion to eliminate phasing of the project. Mr. Foley.
Josh Bully, Lion County Council, for the record. This is one of those rare situations where we have to spend money to save money. It doesn't make a lot of sense, but. We're actually going to save a bit of money by decreasing the phasing somewhere between eighty to a hundred thousand is the estimate, so. We recommend that we do this, District Court as well, and you work with us as we discussed earlier. And use, uh, the Commissioner Chambers for Ford at times, so I think it's a win-win for everybody.
Uh, Commissioner Gray, you got your hand up?
Yeah, so we're gonna save the eighty to a hundred after we spend the forty-eight, or is it gonna be?
That's my understanding.
Oh, that's kinda nice.
Uh, any other questions for Mr. Foley? Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We approve item fifteen B as presented.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Do I have any public comment?
Madam Chair, I don't see any.
Okay, seeing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, sixteen A for possible action. Uh, well, no, wait a minute. We wanna come back to that. What time is it? Ten fifteen? Yeah, we'll come back to that. Hold that thought. Sixteen C for possible action, review and prioritize the current projects of the county manager's office.
All right, you threw me off there for a second.
Well, I, the RFP could go quick or not, and I don't wanna throw everything else off, so I apologize.
No, we're totally fine. Um, so I included the list on, on this agenda item. Um, of just projects that I know about that the county manager's office has been working on, um. And so, I wanted to make sure, one, that we're not missing anything, um, with the, the transition and two. Kind of put a little bit of priority on it, uh, just to figure out and, um, kind of what needs to be done and, and what order. Um, obviously, I mean. We're working on a lot of different things, so, um, that is the purpose for this item. So, with that, are there any items on the list or that, that should be on the list that are not on the list?
Well, I can think of one off the top of my head, 'cause I'm not seeing it on here, and that's the access management.
I will work with Endon on that.
Now, are these really in any priority as they stand here?
No, no, no. They were just added to the list kinda randomly, so.
Okay.
No priority. Just, um, kinda brainstorming with I.
I mean, 'cause some of them already moving along and it's just a matter, you know, just.
Yep.
Time.
Absolutely, I'm. Uh, you know, I sat down with Erin and, uh, she actually put together most of this list on what she knew, and then I added what I knew and. That's how we came up with it.
And, and there's one other one on here, Andrew, that I'm not seeing, and that is. Um, other options, um, outside of a landfill. Uh, not that we're not moving forward with that, but other options on some of the line. Some of the properties that Lion County is already utilizing or have already attempted to get. Um, I believe we were gonna get with possibly RCI and look at some options.
Yes, um, okay, that's a good point.
Uh, any others, um, from the commissioners that you can think of?
I, I think, uh, Commissioner Keller, we also need to add the landfill there. I think we still need to keep pushing forward on that.
Okay, yeah, I, I believe we are on, on that one. Um, we actually, as a board, um, but we. Also mentioned moving on, um, looking into other options.
Yeah, take a multifaceted approach, but.
Exactly.
Just wanna make sure that that's on the, uh, the list, the project list.
Okay.
Commissioner Jacobson, please.
Thank you. Um, I guess, when I was looking through this, I didn't see the. Second bridge in Dayton.
Okay.
Or the floodplain stuff, and, and I'm not saying that that's gonna necessarily. Be, uh, the priority as far as getting the bridge built. But I think looking for funds, grants, et cetera, should always be. On our radar as those continue to be important issues, so that's just my thinking on that.
I agree, absolutely. Good. The subcategory to that, Madam Chair, if I can add, also, good catch, uh, the engineering for it, so if we ever do find those funds. Yeah, I mean, we've set aside the money to start that engineering process, but if we ever do find the funds, um, that will be ready to, should be shovel-ready. As the federal government likes to say.
Yep.
Which ties into the landfill and getting the land because of the right of way. All right.
Okay, Commissioner Hockaday, anything?
No, I think we covered everything. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson. Okay, thank you.
Uh, just Commissioner Hockaday, did you wanna bring up, uh? Your favorite road in, in your neck of the woods? Exactly, that, that should probably stay on the program list as well.
Yeah, I think we did Iasi Miller were engineering that, um. Kinda hit an impasse on, uh. When Bybee and Pete Hendrickson trying to get some control on the speed. But I'm not sure where we can go with that as a priority.
Well, and I, and as far as priorities when it comes to roads, I know like under the ARPA, we have money set aside for. Engineering and stuff for some of these roads, including Ramsey Weeks. Um, I believe that's already. Even though it's not on this list, those are ones that are already moving forward. So, I don't know if you wanna include them on the list so that they're just. In the forefront, so we don't forget them.
And then I've got one more. It's, I've saved my favorite for last, which you guys have been hearing about it from me since the day I got elected. Code Enforcement and the Code Enforcement, um. Uh, Task Force. And I, I think that ought to be somewhere near the top. I mean. We gotta start addressing these issues better, faster. I agree. Okay.
Okay, anything else?
All right.
Okay, so did, Andrew, did you want an actual motion on this for, for direction from the board?
I don't remember if it was.
You, you put it for possible action. That's why I'm asking.
Uh, we certainly can do that, or we, we don't have to.
Ma- Madam Chair, if I might, though, we didn't prioritize, and that the motion was for prioritize. I would, I would like to personally, if, if I had my privilege, I'd just let the county manager work his list.
I would, I would like to personally, if I had my privilege, I'd just let the County Manager work his list. And then if there's something we need to prioritize later on, we bring that back.
I absolutely agree, uh, because some of these are just all being worked on at the same time by different departments and different people.
Exactly.
To give them a priority, um, I I don't think serves the county.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, yeah, like you said, I mean, we've we've been working on each and every one of these, so. We'll continue on.
Okay, so can, you know, does somebody want to make a motion just uh, you know, that this is the list that we're putting forward or?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we uh. Approve the list of uh priorities in a specific order for the County Manager to keep his focus on.
Hey, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, got a motion in a second. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, I can go to public comment now. Anybody for public comment?
I don't see any.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I mean, if nothing else, Andrew, that gives you your somewhat of a list. There's always more than what's on the list. But it gives you an an official direction from the commission. Okay, sixteen D for possible action, approve a one-year contract effective November first, twenty twenty-two. With able janitorial service in the amount of six thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy cents per month. Of service for janitorial services in Burnley. That's just for Burnley. Whoa, okay.
Um, Andrew Haskin again for the record, um, we've lost our janitorial service and so we um sent this out to bid. I think we got one response. This was uh the one response, uh, contracts attached. If anybody has any questions. Please let me know.
Questions for Mr. Haskin?
Can I get the contract?
Yeah, I'm changing occupations, geez. Um.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Jacobson.
Um, and and I chatted with Andrew a little bit about this, but. I'm just curious um if we have a feedback loop at all from um. On really any of these outside services that we get to see if they're actually performing the jobs that they. Bid on. You know, I I don't, I don't, I'm, I don't know why the last service left us, um, but. And maybe we could get if if companies do leave, we at least ask them, you know. Are you just quitting? Are you not doing this anymore? Is it? So that would help, I think, for us understand to uh. Six thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy cents a month, so.
Josh Fuller, Lyon County Comptroller, uh, to address Commissioner Jacobson's question. So. Because the uh, because of the cost of these contracts over fifty thousand, we're required under state law to go out and rebid it each. Or or do a multi-year contract that we bid. So it was time for that anyways, when we did the bid. The existing contractor, which by the way, going back to your question on, do we check to make sure they're doing the work and all those things? Facilities is a fantastic job. Um, you've got Stephanie that takes care of the the custodial work. And she is on top of both making sure the employees and the contracted contractors do what they're supposed to do. And then, of course, you've got that homestead. Um, that does that as well. And then you've got some people underneath him. So as far as that goes, it's good. Well, we came across that they existed, the previous contractor is. They have been having a difficult challenge trying to find people. Go figure, right?
No.
Um, they came back actually partway through and said, we're going to cancel the contract because we can't. Afford to to do it for the price that you're paying for, that we have to pay per hour to do this. And so we actually ended up letting them, it terminated, it was their option, and we did a month to month to get to the point so we could actually go out and do. The formal process. We only received one bidder, the the previous ones, like, you know what? I, I don't want to do firmly anymore. I'm out of Reno. I don't want the headaches. I'm going to stay in. And so we have another, another vendor that um that we're going to recommend that we give a shot.
Yeah, and I think, thank you, Madam Chair, I I just think that 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 information helps to with the public swallow. Uh, that that price tag. So thank you for that, Mr. Foley. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, any further discussion? If not, can I get a motion?
Mad- Madam, Madam Chair, I have a question.
Oh, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Foley, do you, I mean, you might not know, does he about approximately how many work hours per week this covers?
I don't know that off the top of my head. Um, I know the buildings that it covers. I do know that it's a. You know, it's a every day a week type of position that they're going in and clean, shouldn't say every day a week, every business day a week that they go in. And they clean and you're talking about the Fern and Senior Center, which is a large, large area for cleaning. You're talking about the Premier Justice Court. The library, the District Attorney, juvenile probation, Sheriff's Office, Public Health Nurse. All of those facilities in there. If we had a person up there, which we used to, it's a full-time position and then some.
Kind of leads to my next question.
Whether, whether we'd be better off having internal without that discussion probably for the past six months back and forth. With facilities, taking a look, what does this entail? How many hours? What do we do? A full-time employee? When we add vehicles, when we add all of these different things, and we're like, we're getting close to the break-even point. At this, at this dollar amount, but we're not quite there.
I I I appreciate that because I certainly um like to bring as much in-house as we can, but also at the same time, we need to get. The best value for the dollar. But I I mean, personally, I feel a Lyon County employee is more loyal to Lyon County than a contract employee is.
And we did have a discussion on whether we should try and go joint venture with City Burnley. But we have a full-time position we need, and they're asking us for janitorial service on a periodic basis instead. Uh, we can't.
Right.
We can't provide.
All right, thank you.
So are we doing the entire senior center or just the portion that Lyon County is responsible for?
We're responsible for all of them.
For the whole building, okay.
We are. Apparently, uh, we allow outside use, um, city use, any, any type of use of the building use policy, but it's all our responsibility.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Uh, Madam Chair, I moved that we approve a one-year contract effective November one, twenty twenty-two. With able janitorial service in the amount of six thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy cents per month for. Janitorial services in firmly.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Again, any further discussion? Do I have any public comment?
I don't see any.
Seeing any? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Right? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Uh, before I read this and just quickly, Andrew, any update on our ten thirty?
Um, I think he texted me a while back and said that he was about twenty minutes out, so uh, actually, he just walked in.
Oh, okay. All right, well, it's only ten twenty-five, so we'll move on to the next one. I just wanted to see what our status was.
Perfect.
Thank you. Okay, sixteen E for possible action. To set the salary and duties of the Public Health Officer and direct staff to advertise for the position of Public Health Officer. To be appointed on or before January first, twenty twenty-three. Um, first of all, I requested this. Um, this is one of those items that over the years, um. We, we just kept, you know, renewing a contract and renewing a contract and to my knowledge and nowhere can we find. Uh, and this is something that actually came came up a couple years ago. Um, we've never actually advertised for the position to our knowledge. And um, and by NRS, we're required to do a contract, I believe it's every two years, Mr. Haskin. So I will take, let you take it from there, but that was the reason for the request.
All right, Andrew Haskin, again for the record. Um, yeah, so as Chair Keller pointed out, um, there. Um, is a requirement under NRS that ever by January first, at following a general election. We have to appoint the Public Health Officer. Um, the Public Health Officer, uh, as you know, is the. Executive of the Public Health Board. Uh, I mean, sorry, the Board of Public Health, so um. The Board of Public Health obviously oversees sanitary conditions of the county in which the board is created. adopts regulations as may be necessary for prevention, suppression, and control of any contagious or infectious disease dangerous to the public health. Um, County Board of Health may abate nuisances in accordance with law. Establish and maintain isolation hospitals and quarantine stations. Um, when necessary, um, isolate any person or group. Or uh persons with communicative diseases that is infectious and poses a risk to public health. Um, anyway, I can go through the rest of this, like, but um, it was all attached as backup there. So Dr. Titus has served as our Public Health Officer since nineteen eighty-five. Um, there is a. I think as laid back up, we included the the agreements that we have dating back that far. Um, she has served in that position for two hundred dollars a month. It started out at a hundred dollars a month in nineteen eighty-eight. Um, and then it's um increased sometime, I think in nineteen ninety-nine. Is when that that was done. So with that, um. Dr. Titus couldn't be here today. She was in from Finance Committee meeting. And so she asked me to read this letter into the record. Um, so I will do that now. Says, Chair Keller remembers, I apologize, I cannot address you in person. As I am a member of the Nevada Legislative Interim Finance Committee. And I am attending the last meeting in Carson City for this cycle. It was brought to my attention that Chair Keller asked that the job of County Health Officer be put on the agenda with a plan to publicly advertise the position. I would like to offer some insight to the position I have held since nineteen eighty-five with a year off after the birth of my son in nineteen eighty-nine. And then continually since that time to present. The initial salary was a hundred dollars a month, then increased to two hundred sometime in the nineteen nineties. I accepted the position even with minimal reimbursement because I felt it was my civic duty to represent Lyon County. As many of you know, Lyon County paid my way through medical school. I'm grateful for that. Initially, the job required usually two to four hours of my time a month. Fielding calls from citizens with concerns about dead animals, human waste, water quality. Approval of moving bu- bodies from grave sites to other locations and reviewing infectious disease reports from the brothel. So. These are just a few of the calls I have received. Others are not printable. I also attended state meetings for County Health Officer and sat on the brothel board. Several years ago, Lyon County agreed to work with the Carson City Health Department, uh, which became a quad county. I no longer reported infectious diseases to the state, but instead to Carson City. With the onset of COVID nineteen, the job of County Health Officer dramatically changed. In addition to the tasks already listed, daily reports and updates occurred. Lyon County formed a health board, of which I am the chair. Monthly calls with the state health officer are now required. As well as separate calls with fellow county health officers. At this time, I spend a minimum of five to six hours a month in this position. If there is additional information or other events that require my attention or attendance, it may involve or. It may involve more hours in traffic. I've never asked for more money nor reimbursement for travel. There's a statewide push to form regional health districts. You will be hearing about the Central Nevada Health District plans at our next Board of Health meeting. With the additional focus on infectious disease and obligations, I would suggest this is a direction that needs further discussion for Lyon County. I was told that there was going to be a search for applicants to fill the position I currently hold. If that is the case, I am formally asking for reappointment, uh, who would only continue to serve if the reimbursement was increased. To be consistent with the number of hours that it truly involves. The average consultant fee for a physician with my level of professional experience and expertise is two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Finally, as I stated earlier, I have continued to serve as I felt it was my civic duty. I want to make it very clear. That it is my opinion that Chair Keller has placed this on the agenda as vengeance towards me personally. For not supporting her in her race for the Nevada Assembly seat I currently hold. Thank you, Robin Tenses.
Okay. Well, with that being said, um, that was furthest from the truth because this has been something I had been looking into. Um, a lot longer than the last race. The previous county manager and I um started looking into, you know, the the NRS. And the fact that we just kept renewing without really looking at the duties, responsibilities. And so this was uh already slated to be put on the agenda uh before. The last race or Mr. Haskin became interim county manager. So um, some of us can actually separate politics from getting our job done. With that being said, we've never advertised for the position. I thought it was very important for each of the commissioners to understand. What the Public Health Officer did, what the responsibilities were. Rather than come around to January and just be hit with an agenda item saying to renew a contract. I think Andrew has, Mr. Haskin, sorry, Andrew, I'm so used to calling you by your first name.
Wrong.
Um, has provided a lot of backup here and a lot of information um for all to look at. And with that being said, the only thing I was looking at beyond that is the fact that we've never advertised. To actually put the advertisement out there, um, allowing an opportunity. Um, you know, people always want to bring up the good old boys. Well. This is a contract that's been going on since the eighties and has never been addressed to even look to see if there was somebody else. That was interested, qualified, more qualified. Um, and so on. Now, we may not get one application. But I think it at least should be allowed to be put out there publicly. Anyways, do I have any other commissioner comments or questions? Commissioner Gray?
I have a quick question. In reading her letter, it almost sounds like she. You know, does not want to be reappointed. I mean, it it sounds like she's putting a hard hold on it. Um, she only wants to be reappointed if the pay is increased to two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. I mean, is that the way you read it as well?
I do read the leather that way.
So that kind of puts us in a bind where we have, we have to go out and advertise it then. So if she's saying she wants two hundred and fifty dollars an hour, it looks like we need to, we need to go out anyway.
Madam Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Jacobson?
Thank you. It unfortunately, good old boy or not, it looks like this is going to cost the county some money. Because two hundred dollars a buck seems like a steal. With that, is there any way, does this position have to be a medical doctor?
So it has to be based on education. I think a Masters of Public Health would also uh fit for the position. Um, obviously, a medical doctor as well.
Yeah, so I guess where I was leaning, is this something we could slide on to our emergency, our new position? And it doesn't seem like it unless they have some bizarre credentials that would fulfill that.
If, yeah, if it happened to be somebody that had the right, the right education.
Yeah. I was gonna say, wrecking my brain. I think it's, it's got to be a, an epidemiologist, it's got to be an M.D., it's got to be a uh. MPH, there's several key ones that can finish it, but it's got to be somebody with the medical training in public, I mean, public health and infectious diseases.
Well, and I don't believe it actually lays that out. Um, and and Mr. Haskin, you you did all this research. You can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but. Um.
Definitely.
I mean, obviously, we're looking for somebody with a degree that. Can handle the position, but I I don't know that it actually labels out like uh Commissioner Gray was just stating.
So uh, not in the NRS. I did read that somewhere. It might have been in the NAC.
I think, yeah, I think it's in the administrative code and a a public health nurse also.
And I probably, yeah. Um, I I did read that somewhere, though. Um, that's what it's based off of, and I should, I apologize, I should have pulled that and put that on the agenda as well as. But nonetheless, that the uh. But nonetheless, that the uh, it does have to have uh some special. Education for that.
Uh, Commissioner Anderson, did you have your hand up?
Yes, that, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things. Um, one, the NRS, I don't believe requires us to go out to advertise for this position. We can just appoint.
Yeah, the NRS doesn't have any requirements for the.
Cause I, I, yeah, I personally don't see any reason to change. Dr. Titus has done a good job for a number of years and she's been doing it for. Definitely less compensation than what that position is going to entail. So whatever we do is going to cost us more. I did some comparisons. Um, Story County is five hundred bucks a month, Churchill's two thousand bucks a month. Humboldt County, I didn't quite understand, so I'm not gonna, up to a max of seventy-five thousand a year.
I think the Humboldt County position may combine a couple, so.
So but 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 I, I have a question about the agenda item itself. And just, just I want to get clarification about it. It says. To set the salary and duties of the public health officer. And direct staff to advertise for the position. Do we have to do both or can we just do part of that? Can we just? Um, set the salary and the duties without advertising or or is it, yes, is it an up or down?
You know, I will have to defer to the district attorney.
Yeah, Mr. Ry, I, I uh refer to you, but I believe anything that's less than what we put on the agenda is always acceptable as long as we don't do more.
Steve Ry, District Attorney. Uh, I would agree with the chair that if you do less than is on the agenda, that's permitted. So you could do both or you could do something less, one or the other. Any other questions on that?
That's just the, the word and, and the fact that the word Dan was capitalized. I wanted to make sure that we didn't have, that we could split this.
You can split this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, Commissioner Hawkeye, I wasn't sure if your hand was up or not.
No.
Yeah, but Madam Chair, I do have one more question. Um, so we do have. Somewhere. A document that that says what the duties of the public health officer in Lyon County are, correct?
I'd have, you know, honestly, I'd have to do some more research. It's spelled out in the NRS, so um.
Yeah, I, I noticed some of the, some of the backup material, you know, some of the, some of the other counties have some pretty.
Yeah.
Pretty uh specific duties.
And and we would take a look at doing a similar type document for this next goal regardless of which direction.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Ken Gray.
Oh, Commissioner Gray.
Hey, would you be uh willing to entertain a, a motion to table us till the next meeting so we can find out what the N A C says about? The requirements for the position so we can have a better idea um of where we need to go with this and gather a little more information.
Well, I'm gonna defer to. Mr. Haskin, because as you know, this has to be award appointed by January first of twenty twenty-three, so. If there's going to be a direction to at least advertise, then he's going to have to have time to do that properly.
So I do agree with that. Um, if we are gonna advertise, we're gonna have to have it out for a certain amount of time. So in order to get it awarded, but by January first, really the second meeting in December, I mean, a little bit of time to do that. Um, so.
So that would still give you, that would still give you time if we postpone it to the next meeting, correct? First meeting in November? And then you'd have, how long do you have to advertise it?
It'll be really tight. I mean. Yeah, so um.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Be very tight.
Thank you. Well, I guess. Can we advertise without a job description? So we have to create that anyhow, don't we?
We would put all that together, yeah.
All right, so I think we. In the two weeks between now and our next meeting, that would get, that would get done then, correct? I mean, I don't.
So to clarify the next uh. What uh? Ms. Lopez was saying was that uh our agendas and everything is due tomorrow because.
Oh.
So.
Cause, cause, sorry, Aaron, I was.
That would be pretty.
Not listening.
Cause apparently. Yeah, Ma- Madam Chair, if I may, cause I, I'm. Kind of agree with Commissioner Gray. We don't have enough information. To. I, I think to. Make a wise decision at this point. I, I know I need more information.
Is, is the January first, I'm sorry, this question for Mr. Haskin, uh, Ms. Keller, is the January first a hard deadline or cannot be extended?
So it is our deadline in NRS. Um, essentially if the county doesn't appoint somebody um. Within thirty days after that deadline, then we would have, the state gets to appoint somebody.
So it's not a hard deadline. State's not gonna take any, we have thirty days to blow past it, then the state is not going to take any action.
It's a hard deadline and that NRS says that we have to do it, but we shall do it by.
Ma- Ma- Madam Chair, um. I- I- if I may. Um, in NRS four thirty-nine dot two ninety. Sub three, the term of office of the county health officers is two years or until a successor has been appointed and qualified. So that may. May give us a little bit of time.
Not a hard deadline, it sounds like.
We can, so is the motion to table it then or?
I was asking if, if Ms. Keller would be okay with that, given the information that we've got. Just uh. I would like to know more about the requirements and kind of how hard it's going to be to fill, what the costs are going to be. As I said, no matter what, it's going to go up. I mean, now, you know, Dr. Titus is, you know, referring is requesting two fifty an hour. Uh, if she goes forward this position. I mean, that's the way I read the letter. Am I? Am I, am I not reading that correctly?
No, you are. Okay.
I, I, I don't, I, I, I think. Yeah, might be an hourly figure, maybe a monthly figure that we could come to that would be acceptable. Yeah, this, 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 this isn't baked yet.
Right, and, and to advertise for interested parties, like I said, we may not get any other interested party and then you might. The point is that it's never been advertised in all these years since.
I'm sorry, I didn't get it around, but I'm, I'm not sure we have a consensus to advertise this time.
Anyways, um, if you would like to bring this back uh on the next meeting, uh, I have no problem with that. Because to be honest with you, I'm not going to be on the board when y'all make this decision. So it's up to you guys. Um, it was brought forward for your information and uh knowledge. So I will, uh, I will make the motion that we bring this back at the first meet. Well, we can't because it's got to be. You ain't got time. Well, I guess we, you could put it back on the agenda. You just might have late backup.
Might be late backup, but I, we can get it on the agenda.
No, I, I, I definitely think we need to get it on the next agenda. We don't, this one off.
I moved if we put it on the next agenda.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, I'm gonna go to my ten thirty since um.
Can we take two minutes?
We can. You want two, three, four, or five?
Whatever you say, Madam Chair.
Okay, let, let's take three minutes and get, get moving. Okay. Everybody ready?
As will ever be.
Alrighty. Page back to. The item. All right, we're gonna go back to our ten thirty. Time specific, item six A for presentation and update from Ormet Technologies Inc. On geothermal activities in and around Lyon County.
Okay, Madam Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Scott Nichols. I'm from Ormat Technologies over in Reno, Nevada. Um, I travel throughout Nevada, California, Southern Oregon and, and Idaho. Talking about communicating and meeting with communities about geothermal resources and energy production. Um, I want to thank you for having me this morning. Um, all elements were conspiring to again delay this meeting. When we found traffic backed up and I'm taking back roads and avoiding accidents and everything else, but anyway. Thank you for having me. This is an information item. I'm not asking for any, uh, any sort of resolution or any decision or anything. And I want to thank Commissioner Jacobson, um, who I've met previously, um, and, and thank him for asking me to come down. And inviting me to make this presentation here for, uh, for Lyon County. You know, yesterday I was on a conference call, um, and you know, was interesting on the drive down here today. But that conference call was the uh B L M's Resource Advisory Council. The. I guess what I want to really observe and, and recognize for new commissioners, outgoing commissioners, new assemblymen. Is that whether you're in Oregon, Idaho, Utah, Nevada. Every one of our states is experiencing an unprecedented level. Of change and growth and. Uh, really, it's, it's incredible that, that the physical, uh, you know. Urban changes that we're seeing in our communities. The number one um issue affecting recreation on our public land or affecting our public lands. Is not just recreational access, but with literally um. Permanent residents on our public lands with the housing crisis. And where I'm going with this is that. As you as leaders and community members, as you are working to balance of all of these. All of these issues and all of these stressors in our, in our communities, working with federal agencies, working with other local organizations. Um, that is a, that is a huge task. It's an ongoing balancing act and I want to commend you for doing that. Um, for taking that role. It's, it's a thankless job, I think. Um, but I get to talk with, with your counterparts all over Nevada, Utah, Oregon. Um, you know, Idaho and into Southern California. And it is interesting how similar everybody's concerns are when you look at it at that bigger scale. So that Ormat Technologies is a geothermal power company. We produce energy from the heat that is located in. Brine reservoirs located beneath, beneath the sur- surface of the ground. We, we actually market that power to utilities, uh, wherever that utility may be located. And I want to jump to this um, to this summary and, and what I want to talk about in how we provide that power to the utilities. And, and the energy grid. The discussion topics, I'm going to keep this, I'm going to speed it up here. Why geothermal? What do we know about geothermal? The regional power markets, capacity factors and the type of geothermal systems that we deal with. Western Governors Association has right now. Uh, an effort to look at geothermal resources and expanding the use of geothermal resources across our, our western states. Uh, I'll be on that meeting on Monday and I'll talk a little bit about that right now. In the Great Basin, I want to give you a quick geological perspective of why Nevada is ground zero for the geothermal industry. Uh, the development process, a regional perspective, past, present and future. And some of the environmental and community benefits that are available to today's. Geothermal energy as opposed to resources that may have been developed or are legacy issues from the seventies or eighties. Um, that we've, that we've learned from. Um, lastly, a local update, I'll tell you just a little bit about some of our operations in, in the region right here. Um, that said, I, I like to oftentimes for the audience, for some folks that don't know. All of our electricity is in this country is broken up into um balancing authorities. These are the, the utilities or a number of utilities that supply power to the community. You can see that huge balancing authority in the Pacific Northwest stretches down through central Nevada. And envy energy is that small circle right there in the center of Nevada. Uh, you can see how that compares to others in Southern California. And right now, the topic, the topic of discussion is how are we going to? How are these balancing authorities and uh going to interconnect? And how are they going to provide power into these markets that are maximizing their capability to produce power? Where are they going to get it from? Um, United States has seventy-three hundred power plants, uh, nearly a hundred and sixty thousand miles of high voltage transmission lines. Millions of low voltage distribution lines and transformer stations. Um, that network structure helps maintain reliability. Those power, power systems can be routed like traffic through different, through different substations. And into areas that may be um down or out of power. Uh, they may bring it in on a different, on a different route or line. Demand and supply, for many folks, this is a, a really an interesting concept. Demand and supply have to be balanced on a continuous basis. You cannot, we as a community cannot generate a thousand more megawatts than we use. We have to put that energy someplace. It's like blowing up a balloon. And if we generate more than we use on a continuous basis, we begin to expand that balloon to the point of overload. If we don't produce stuff, we see rolling brownouts. If we overload, we blow transformers and we see blackouts. Uh, I'm not an energy expert. I'm going to talk really gently. So these balancing authorities balance all of these power loads. They look at geothermal power. They look at uh some of our coal producing plants. They look at wind, solar and others. Um, they ensure that demand is balanced and that it's balanced in real time and that it's reliable. And as you know, the Public Utility Commission generally looks at the prices that we charge or where that we pay for power on an annual basis. And they regulate the cost that of, of that power. A lot of folks don't realize that. Um, and, and again, some of this for the community is that there's a difference between transmission lines and distribution lines. And somebody says, well, I want to, I want to hook up a solar system. And I'm just going to put twenty acres of solar out there and me and my neighbors are all going to have free, free electricity because I can build a solar system. And you say, well, not really, because that community or that area is served by, by envy energy who has a transformer station. And you can't just put that power onto the grid. You either have to connect as a, as an individual homeowner and, and have a two-way connection in which they will net meter with you. Or you really have to go off-grid. Or you have to pay for the cost of connecting to that distribution system. So those are all things that go into this evaluation of power resources and where they might go. With regard to geothermal, I like to say that, well, I don't say, it's a fact. Geothermal energy has the highest energy capacity factor of any renewable energy we can develop as we look at energy. A good example to compare to would be coal or for that matter, nuclear. The, the capacity factor is how much is built compared to how much is actually delivered. And this is where the aha moment is for many folks. When we build a geothermal plant, we say we're going to deliver ten megawatts of geothermal power, which will power approximately ten thousand households. We are going to deliver, that, that plant is going to be capable of delivering on an annual basis about ninety-nine point five percent. Of that output. So we'll schedule that if they need ten megawatts, we'll build a little bit larger. Now, to build that same facility in solar, you have to build about. Two to four times as much capacity as you deliver. Solar can only deliver power fifty percent of the day because that sun doesn't shine yet at fifty percent. Then you have cloud cover, so, so you don't have the same capacity factor. We show here solar being at about forty, forty-two percent. Um, I'm sorry, solar is being about thirty. I'm reading my graph upside down. I apologize. At about thirty percent. Wind facilities, again, the wind doesn't blow all the time. As I came south, I looked at some wind turbines yesterday. And I noticed that none of those turbines are blowing. We're in a really dry spell of the year, so wind turbines produce about forty to forty-five percent of their design capacity. Meaning that if we need ten megawatts of power, I have to build thirty megawatts of solar. And I have to build about twenty megawatts of, of wind to do the same thing as building ten megawatts of geothermal. Bottom line is, geothermal energy provides more energy on a smaller foot footprint with less visual impact. Than any other renewable energy resource we can develop. The downside is the geothermal, because it does have a downside, is that it is only where you find it. Geothermal resources are confined resources. The biggest question I have is I is I worked with communities and Indian tribes and and commissions across Nevada and the other areas states we work in, Utah. And Idaho. Is, well, how much of my groundwater are you going to use? How much will my groundwater be depleted? And I like to say, well, none. Because it's really not groundwater that we're using. They say, well, wait a minute, you're this is geothermal. It's in the ground. And I say, yes, it is geothermal and it is in the ground. But let's go back to our stove top physics. And and some of the ladies will or guys will look at me and what do you mean stove top physics? I said, well, this, who has an Instapot? And everybody knows if you got an Instapot, Grandma used to have a pressure cooker. You cannot have water that is heated beyond two hundred and twelve degrees. Without having it under pressure. And if that is under pressure, that means it is also confined. It can't go anyplace. Now, there may be a little bit of a leakage here and there, a leakage where we sit in a hot spring in central Nevada, and we've all probably enjoyed some hot springs. And that is a leakage from maybe a larger resource, maybe a small resource. But that leakage does not exceed the confined geothermal system's capability. To maintain that extremely high temperature and pressure. So when we talk about temperature and pressure, we're looking at resources that are superheated to a temperature of anywhere from two hundred and seventy to four hundred degrees. Fahrenheit. When the pressure on those systems is released. That that liquid water will turn to steam because it is superheated. The pressures in those systems typically run. A hundred, a hundred eighty to a hundred PSI, maybe more within the rock systems. I'm not a geologist either, so I have a little bit of geology background. But they are. Superheated and highly pressurized. So when we drill into those systems, we have to be very careful with our drilling. To make sure that those fluids are not released. That that pressure is maintained and we don't and we don't have any problems in terms of our actual drilling operations. If anybody's drilled into or seen an artesian well. If you hit an artesian well, the driller has to deal with this mass of water that wants to push out and continue to flow naturally. We have to control that in the geothermal system. I want to back up real quick. I'm sorry. We talked about low temperature systems, medium temperature systems, and high temperature systems. In terms of power generation, we deal with high temperature systems only. They're commercial power. They may also be, if anybody has been to the Gildesburg, Sonoma. And Napa Valley area, you'll know just north of there is the Geyser's Steamfield. The Geyser Steamfield is an extremely hot steam field. That is where they have power that is produced from the direct release of steam from that very large resource. Produces about a thousand megawatts a year on a continuous basis. Medium temperature resources would be what you would be maybe consider as a commercial heating district. Using the primary heat from a hot spring or a thermal area for direct heating. Boise, Idaho happens to have the largest geothermal heating district in the country. The Capitol Mall complex and and several miles of roads and and. House households are heated with geothermal heat. Part of the Boise State University is is geothermally heated. That is where they take that geothermal, that geothermal water. They put it into a radiant heating system in a building or in floor heating. That water never sees the light of day. It goes back in the ground. It is re-injected into the ground. We talk about low temperature systems. I actually have these as direct green, direct heating also greenhouse in floor. They're all closed loop, zero emission type systems. We go to the next slide. For power generation, we're talking about high temperature power generation systems, high temperature, high pressures. What we do at Ormat, we're a vertically integrated company. So we produce our own heat exchangers. We produce our own pumps, not our own motors, but our own pumps. And our own condensing equipment. This is. An industrial size. Air conditioner. Electric heat pump is what we're used. We use in some cases the same fluid that is used in a heat pump. In most cases, we use a secondary working fluid, either pentane or butane. What we do is we pull that geothermal heat from the ground. In the fluid, we keep it confined. It never sees the light of day. The heat from that geothermal fluid is transferred to our working fluid. That working fluid expands as it turns from liquid to a gas phase. It expands in a confined chamber. In that confined chamber, it generates pressure. And that pressure is then forced or directed out through a turbine, which spins a generator to produce our power. As that working fluid is discharged from the end of that. From that turbine. It is still kept in a in a confined space. It is collected into an exhaust system. And placed into a condenser, i.e. a radiator. What you would see at the back of our houses or on the front of our cars, where that fluid is then. Recondensed into its liquid form. And reused in that generation, that power generation cycle. There are some really good YouTube videos, and if you're interested, you can get online and take a look at Ormat Technologies on YouTube, and it has the entire system shown in in animated form. If you have any questions, feel free to just raise your hand as we go along. I'll be happy to stop for a second, but I want to keep things moving. Nevada is ground zero. The Great Basin is ground zero for geothermal power. Yesterday I talked with a groundwater hydrologist. He and I were talking about the lines on this map that you see right here. You'll see in the very bottom left hand corner, Madam Chairman, I'm not sure if you can see that very bottom line down by Mono Lake. That is our Mammoth Complex. It's been operating for over thirty years. It's a very large facility. We just improved the output there and drilled a couple of new wells. The Casa Diablo Four Project is just came online. The Sierra Front forms the bound boundary of of really the Great Basin on the west side. And the red lines on this on this Google Earth map represent the Great Basin. And Range Fault System on which we see the trend of these geothermal systems. The discussion that we've been having is where are our next geothermal systems? And why do they all seem to be concentrated in northwestern Nevada? And the very basic explanation that I received yesterday was that. The stretching and the tectonic plates that Nevada sits on, that our country sits on. Are actually, they come together in Northern California. Or just below Northern, the California Nevada or Oregon border. And then you've got the Sierra Front and and Washoe Valley. And these are all newer fault systems. If you if you look in the north end of that north. Upper and left side of that photo, you'll see Pyramid Lake with a red line drawn straight north. Into what we call the Baltasar Project. And that line can be projected all the way to our Neil Hot Springs geothermal facility in Oregon, in Malheur County, Oregon. And along that line, we have, if you extend it to the Steamboat property, actually, which is just to the south of there. You have about. A dozen, at least three producing geothermal power plants with four additional prospects on that on that tectonic, on that faulting line. And so this tectonic activity is what is it stretches our the earth's crust. Provides these geothermal resources and the capability to develop those resources. I'm going to keep going. I'm going to talk about the development process. While geothermal energy produces a lot of really good power, it's still a very small component. Geothermal energy happens to be the most arduous permitting process of any energy development that we can. That we can pursue. There are a number of factors and I and I'm working, that's part of my job is to work. To streamline. Some of those factors. We go through a reconnaissance and exploration phase. We have a really neat technique called geothermometry. Where you can take a sample of the water. And we measure a couple of constituents in that water. And those constituents that when put on a graph will tell you the approximate highest temperature that that water has ever achieved. So a quick and I shouldn't say quick and dirty, but a pretty quick and clean way to look at some of these hot springs and say, we have an interest in these areas. Is to pull up, you take a sample of that hot spring that is leaking out. And you do this geochemistry. It's silica, calcidine, and. I forget the other one, but it's silica, calcidine, and. Chlorine, I'm sorry. You measure those components. And when you when you see those mapped out on the on the charts, you can say, this temperature, at some point, this water has been three hundred degrees. Or three hundred and fifty degrees in temperature. Now, I don't know whether that is in time yet, whether it was a thousand years ago. Or I don't know whether it was. Just in depth. And there's a. Sort of a, I'm going to cliche this hotter pot of gold, so to speak. But if it is a, it could be, and oftentimes is, a leaking geothermal system that is superheated. Those are the systems that we're very interested in. We go through this reconnaissance phase. We do, we do some very basic exploration activities. We'll do temperature probes. We will do shallow direct push, what we call direct push, temperature gradients to measure the the ground surface and how hot the temperatures are. At our Black Rock Desert operation, Santa Medio, we actually have a line up the side of the valley where the temperature of the ground never is below about a hundred degrees. Even in the wintertime when it snows, you can see that suture line where the geothermal fluid has come up to the surface. We do go through about two different environmental. Minimum of two environmental reviews at the federal level to be able to put a project online. We'll do an initial. Initial review with the BLM for either environmental assessment. Or maybe a determination of need to adequacy. We'll do our exploration under an environmental assessment. If we determine that there is a suitable geothermal resource present. We then have to go back to another environmental assessment or an environmental impact statement to actually evaluate what may happen. So it is a, it is typically. I want to say a three to seven year process, and in some cases, we've worked. For more than ten years in acquiring permits for these projects. Regional Perspective Ormat has a number of producing. Facilities across Churchill. We don't have anything in Humboldt yet. We are looking at Humboldt County and we are looking here in Lion County. We have a. A new prospect that we are interested in. The Dixie Valley was started in nineteen eighty eight. About sixty seven megawatts, the tungsten project, twenty seventeen, twenty nine megawatts. You'll see some of the items here listed have solar added. In some cases, our contracts will allow us to to utilize solar power. To. Power our pumping operations or our in-house operations. And some contracts with NV Energy or others, we have to, we have to buy power from the utility. In in order to what we call black start. When you originally start up the operation, you have no power. So you have no power to turn a pump on. You either have to buy that power from the utility or have a generator to start it. Once the plant is up and going, you turn the generator off, you close the breakers to NV Energy and power only goes back out to the grid. But in a number of areas, we are looking at developing small solar facilities, seven acres, ten acres, twenty acres of solar here and there. That solar power will allow us to offset or max, not not offset really, to maximize the amount of geothermal that is put on the grid. And and use a lower cost solar power to run our pumps. Right now, we have exploration and some pre-feasibility work being done at a project, what we call Kalato, near the near the prison just north of of Lovelock. And the Diatomaceous Earth Plant on Interstate eighty. You're probably all familiar with the Brady Hot Springs Plant. It's been there on I eighty for years and years. We own and operate that. We're improving the output there right now. We have a project called Comstock. It is, it is to the east here. Diamond Flat is located. Just between Shurs and Fallon, about a mile south of. The county, I think it's the tri-county landfill. So about a mile south of there is what we call Diamond Flat. Looking at that and working with. With the Walker River Tribe and the BLM to permit that. We have a project called New York Canyon, which is. In Pershing County, and it is east of a little bit south and east of of Lovelock. Project that we have here in in, I shouldn't say a project yet, but the exploration interest that we have here. Is what we are calling Mason right now, and we are at the very preliminary stage of doing some geothermometry. And some surface analysis and trying to decide what our next steps will be. But I hope to be back in Lion County. And I hope I can give you some good information and would look forward to being able to give you an update in the future. So thank you for having me.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Do I have questions from any of the commissioners?
Just a quick comment, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Gray.
Give me a geothermal any day of the week over, you know, solar, over wind. I mean, things that really. You know, that that are having a negative impact on view shed and. Not producing what they said they're going to produce or killing birds or, you know, a wonderful solar tower down in Vegas that, you know, bird flies into that and it gets zapped and poof. You've seen the videos?
Yeah.
So yeah, no, this is, I I've never, never understood. With the minimal impact that this has, minimal environmental impact and the greater. You know, the rewards that you get from it, why it hasn't been more widespread.
Commissioner Gray, I want to thank you for that recognition. And, you know, I do, I I work very hard working with the BLM to try and. Communicate the fact that, yes, we have cultural interests that need to be protected. We have archaeological sites that need to protect, be protected. And we have wildlife or maybe potentially endangered species that need to be avoided. But I will tell you that the team's buckwheat is growing under our geothermal power plant at Steamboat in South Reno. And when people worry about sound and view shed, I will tell you that. You know, I I actually stopped at a wellhead and measured the decibel with my decibel meter, sixty six decibels. At a hundred feet at a at a wellhead. So it's pretty, pretty low. Thank you for those comments.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, ma'am. The Peppermill Casino.
Yes, sir.
Is totally. I'd learned this a few years ago, but I didn't realize it till, like I said a few years ago, but. Can you share a little bit about that facility and what they do?
Yes. So Commissioner Jacobson, thank you for that question. The Peppermill Casino, I'm not an expert, so I'm going to open my mouth and then we'll clean up the mess later, but Peppermill is geothermally heated. They still use electricity. But the heating supply for their hot water, and I haven't been on a tour of that system, I will get a tour. And if you would like a tour, you let me know and we'll we'll get a tour together. But yes, the Peppermill is geothermally heated. It's a really unique system. It's very localized. It's right in that area, so they have a production well and an injection well and use that as a direct heating use for their heating needs.
The entire casino.
Yes.
And properties, yes. I thought that was interesting.
Interestingly enough, Mammoth, California, they have a new motel hotel going there, and they're looking at the very same thing. They're looking at direct heating use, one production well, one injection well. All of their heating system will be either radiant or in-floor heating. They'll probably use some of that for their for heat exchange in their water heaters. But yes, very, very, very efficient.
And then just, Madam Chair, if I may, just for. What other counties have you presented in? And have you experienced any kickback from any other than Nevada counties?
I have not experienced any kickback or any negative concerns from any of our counties in Nevada. In fact. Whether it be Imperial, California, to Malheur, Oregon, to Cacheah County, Idaho. I like to say, you know, I forgot to tell you about this and I apologize. Not only does geothermal provide really good environmental benefits. But as we come in, I I want to just, let's make an assumption that the Mason Project here, south of town. I I don't even have a location on it yet. The leases were just being issued by the Bureau of Land Management. But the neat thing about geothermal is that we don't require. Road upgrades. We don't require infrastructure upgrades. Our operations are not going to add. Hundreds of schoolchildren or even probably dozens of schoolchildren. You will not see an influx of people. And while we like to promote the positive benefits of the economic impact. Of construction up to hundreds of workers, those workers come in groups of ten or twenty. One day and thirty another day, and then it's back to ten, and then it's up to thirty. And the proliferation or trickle down effect of those businesses is incredible. Yet you will end up with a taxable. A taxable improvement. That brings an incredibly. A substantial return to the county in terms of an annual annual taxable, you know, structural improvement.
That was my next question. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners?
Yes, Madam Chair, if I may.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. That was very informative. And I also just want to thank Ormat for, you know, over the years, your longstanding support.
And I also just wanna thank Oramat for, you know, over the years, your longstanding support and participation in NACO. With all of Nevada's counties, you know, we, we certainly appreciate that as well.
Commissioner Henderson, thank you for those comments and I look forward to talking with you again and. Again, my offer would stand for any of you commissioners that are the staff that would like to visit a site. Please feel free, I'm gonna grab my cards for you, feel free to reach out and I will arrange a tour and, uh, probably. Better information that will clean up all the lies that I've told you, so.
Madam Chair.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Hawkeye.
Yeah, first of all, very interesting, I didn't know that much about geothermal and I appreciate you giving me the information about it. Um, how difficult it is, is it to re-inject? I mean, it seems, yeah, you can pump it out easy, but how difficult is re-injection? And also the recharge, you kinda showed that on the mountains. Based on, you know, rainfall, which of course we have problems with, uh, from time to time. Uh, so what would you say on those?
Commissioner Hawkeye, that's a really good question, um, and just to clarify, you were asking about how difficult it is to recharge. And then probably with the recharge, knowing that that water had to come from someplace. You know, it comes from snow melt and, and recharge, maybe, um. Uh, groundwater that penetrates deep, deep within these fractures. So I wanna give you two examples, one is an example that we had in, uh, Southern Idaho. We had a, a well that we drilled to seven thousand feet. The rock that you're drilling into is very, very hard and quartzitic, it's, it's fairly solid. And we started out on that well, interestingly enough, with about. Three hundred PSI, the, the pumps really had to work hard to get about ninety gallons a minute into that well. And we, we got a grant with the Department of Energy and University of Utah led the grant. And they tested some, some potential to help the injection. And you can see this online for Berkeley Laboratories, we actually injected, we, we cooled the water down. And injected in, into that quartzitic basement rock seven thousand feet down. And like crystal, that rock contracted when it got cold. And created micro fractures. And the productivity of that well not only supports. The geothermal system and maintenance of the geothermal system that we generate our electricity on. Because you can see how long that water takes to go through the system. We actually can monitor that water and see when it comes back in our production wells. But our, our, our pressures dropped to more in the. Hundred PSI or fifty PSI range and our injection increased to nearly nine hundred gallons a minute. So it did propagate some fractures and it can be difficult. Now I wanna give you a different example, on these basin and range faults, the biggest. Um, conundrum or experiment that we have to figure out in developing a successful resource. Is alluded to by your question. And that is, where do you put that water in the ground? So that you don't cool off your resource, but you don't deplete your resource. And we have another well, uh, a well that we drill in, in Idaho, in actually Oregon, at the Neil Hot Springs Project. That well at about six thousand feet hit a fracture on the range front fault that. Is so big, we can't measure it. And so when the water, when the geothermal brine is pumped over to that well, it will take, it's actually on vacuum. That well is on vacuum and takes over four thousand gallons a minute of water. Into this underground fa- fracture that can't be described as anything like. Other than, almost like a karst topography, it is a huge fracture, you know, six thousand feet down. And again, we can measure that fluid, we can actually add dye to the fluid under permits with Nevada State of Nevada. We put dye in that fluid and we measure it when it comes back to our, to our production pumps. So sometimes it's very easy and sometimes it's very difficult. And sometimes it takes a couple of wells to get it right. All of that water, I can sell, tell you, it is, there is no consumption of that geothermal brine. In that system and there's no release of steam from the geothermal brine. To the atmosphere ever, it's a closed-loop system, both for the geothermal brine and for our working fluid. Historically, that didn't happen on all the sites. But even in California, where they have steam turbines, they are now trying to re-condense that steam that is released. Re-condense it, cap and stick it back in the ground. So, does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yeah, it's difficult.
It, it is, it is an engineering.
It's, it's not simple, uh, just, and a, a last question here very quickly would be. A comparison, you know, I'm not a big solar panel person based on the amount of land that these panels take. Do you have some type of a comparison between the megawatts produced by, uh, your geothermal versus. How many acres it would take to produce the same in solar panels?
We actually, Commissioner Hawkeye, thank you for that question, um, we discussed that at NACO a little bit with some side discussions. Um, and please don't quote me on the numbers, I'm gonna go a little bit by memory and what I, what I'm hearing. In, in the industry right now. I believe what we're looking at right now is about seven acres, six to seven acres. Per megawatt for solar panels, so it takes six to seven acres to generate. One megawatt of power under solar panels. It will take on that, geothermal is very difficult to measure on an acreage basis, but I can give you some comparisons. Um, we have a twenty-two and a half megawatt geothermal power plant and it uses twenty acres combined, everything. We have a seven acre primary operations area, and then we have these little roads and splinters. Uh, but you know, a pipeline and a road and a pipeline in a road. So I like to talk about geothermal being more in the terms of, you know, a couple of acres. And in areas, for example, where I'll be tonight at Gerlock, Nevada. The Gerlock community is very concerned about visuals, and so we can commit to put that behind a hill. So it's not in sight, we can commit to have, uh, downward, uh, dark sky compliant lighting. That only comes on when there's a body present, when somebody needs it to be on. So, wind power, uh, I, I wanna comment on wind. We're looking at wind power right now, uh, in part of the Resource Advisory Council for the BLM, we were discussing the acreages of wind power. Right now, we have the largest wind power project proposed probably in the Western US, it's eighty thousand acres. Um, in South Central Idaho, it will generate, well, the design capacity is a thousand megawatts. Its deliverable capacity is about four hundred and fifty megawatts. So, uh, but it uses eighty thousand acres of ground.
That's, that's hundred and twenty-five square miles.
Hundred and twenty-five square miles, and that's the first of three. What I did not talk about, um, Madam Chairman, do I have an extra minute?
Sure.
So there are two, what this, what this brings up, uh, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. Is you, we've all heard about the Greenlink project through. East Central Nevada that goes into Southern Idaho. And they're now looking at a, a, um, probably a cascade front and, uh, Sierra front. Uh, large distribution lines to be able to move this power around. Um, and so that Greenlink project, those, these developers are looking at these areas and saying, we need to propose these massive. Projects in order to utilize the Greenlink project to send power to California. And that's, you know, the Greenlink project to, that inner tie for that power distribution from Southern California is driving. Now the demand for people to build these huge projects in Northern Nevada and Southern Idaho, thank you for your time.
Okay, did we have any other questions?
Commissioner Gray?
A couple, uh, first one is, uh, price per kilowatt hour to produce, I mean, what's, do you guys have a, a chart? Or do you guys have something that, you know, taste, take, you already know where I'm going?
Yeah, please, price per kilowatt, um, we have to be competitive. Because everything we do is on an open competitive market and the utilities decide what they'll pay. What we found is that historically, I, to be absolutely right up front, geothermal is. Has historically been one of the most expensive products that our utilities can purchase. But the utilities like it in their mix of power resources. When I say most expensive, we're looking at anywhere from sixty five, six point five cents per kilowatt. Um, up to maybe eight cents per kilowatt.
What's it say, cost for, for, uh, you know, wind generation?
Oh, I don't know.
That's, that's kinda what I'm looking, I mean, everybody's all, you know, they, they're screaming at us, you know, alternative energy sources, but. There's so many, and last thing I wanna look at is a, what was it, a hundred and twenty-five square miles of, of windmills?
Of red lights.
Oh, by the way, and when they catch fire, you know, it's an environmental disaster, um. All that oil, and so I just.
Level only, yes, yes, so, and we're learning about that.
And how do you recycle them when they're dead?
Right, so, um, six and a half to eight cents a kilowatt, we have some contracts that go higher. We have some older contracts that are lower, but we have to be competitive on the market with those utilities. And that's why, and I have not looked at the price of solar contracts, I just, I, I haven't paid any attention there and I probably should, I'm sorry.
So final question, and you talked about lights, you know, flip, there's only, only when somebody's there. How many, uh, FTEs are you looking at to run a facility, you know, once it's up and running, how many, you know, how many folks are you looking at?
It depends on size and we're getting really efficient with our remote operations, so.
Are you working from home also, are you?
Yeah, our operators are at, our, our steamboat operations, uh, right here in, in South Reno. Actually operate, um, plants. When guys go home at night, when they wanna go home, they'll shift operations with today's technology. Zoom and the connectivity otherwise to be able to operate these plants remotely. I'm, I will say that we, we have a, uh, this twenty-two megawatt facility in Oregon has fourteen staff. Uh, we have a, a ten megawatt facility at Santa Medio. Right up here just north of Fernley, one hour north of Fernley, and that had, I wanna say, six or seven staff. So, pretty low impact when, and they're locals, the Raft River project, I have to give kudos to this project in Idaho. We, you know, our thought process then was that our farmers and ranchers hold things together with duct tape and baling twine. And every one of our operators there is from in the community that they came from. They still ho- have their ranches, they still have their farms, they still raise cows and horses. Their kids are raising sheep and they're cutting hay when they go home at night. But by golly, they're, they're at the plant on a twelve-hour shift. With a permanent, with a permanent, uh, employment opportunity.
So you just, you train them to be operators, huh?
We train them to be operators and they can work right there and, you know, they're ten minutes down the road, what better deal?
Thank you.
Thank you, sure appreciate your time, thank you.
So I, I dearly appreciate, um, the presentation, that was great. Um, having actually toured a geothermal plan or two, uh, including Steamboat back in the day. Um, wouldn't actually mind touring one again, anyways, um, I, I've always been for geothermal. And I think it's a, definitely a better way than wind and solar. But, uh, yeah, this presentation, uh, it, it was great. I, I actually hadn't seen a, a good presentation like this in quite some time, so thank you for. Going through the accidents and the U-turns and detours to get to us today to, to do the presentation.
Madam, Madam Chairman, thank you for having me and I wanna thank Commissioner Jacobson for inviting me down. And, uh, anytime you'd like me to come, I will endeavor to keep you apprised of any of our exploration activities on this little project, uh, to the south, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Rob, thank you, Jacobson. Don't forget the business cards.
I will bring those back here.
Okay, uh, real quickly, we're gonna go to sixteen F. Approve a proclamation declaring October Domestic Violence Prevention Month in Lyon County, Nevada. Requested by Commissioner Henderson.
Andrew Haskin for the record, uh, uh, again, this is requested by Commissioner Henderson and, uh, I'll turn it over to him to. Read the proclamation and, um, go from there.
Thank you, and, and thank you, Madam Chair. So I will read a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas forty-three point eight percent of Nevada women and thirty-two point eight percent of Nevada men experience intimate partner of physical violence. Intimate partner sexual violence and or intimate partner stalking in their lifetimes. Whereas approximately fifteen point five million children are exposed to domestic violence every year. Whereas when a family member is abused, it can have long-term damaging effects on the victim that also leave a mark on family, friends and the community at large. Whereas families are indispensable to a stable, stable society. And they should be a place of support to instill responsibility and values in the next generation. And whereas the problems of sexual and domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people. But crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious and social, social, societ- so, ah, societal barriers. That are sustained by so- societal indifference. Whereas the crimes of domestic and sexual violence violate an individual's privacy, dignity, security. And humanity due to systemic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological and economic control and or abuse. Whereas victims should have help to find the compassion, comfort and healing they need and abusers would be punished to the full extent of the law. Whereas victims of violence should have access to medical and legal services, counseling, emergency and transitional housing. And other supportive services so that they can safely escape the cycle of abuse. Whereas it is important to recognize the compassion and dedication of the individuals who provide services to victims of domestic and sexual violence. And work to increase public understanding of this significant problem. And whereas local programs, state coalitions, national organizations. And other agencies nationwide are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic and sexual violence and its prevalence. And to eliminating it through prevention and education. And whereas we dedicate ourselves to protecting vulnerable members of our community. Whereas Lyon County has a moral obligation to work to prevent domestic violence, address its brutal and destructive efforts, effects. And make ending domestic violence a local priority. Now therefore, the Lyon County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim the month of October Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And urge all citizens to actively support the work towards the elimination of domestic violence and sexual assault. And, and with that, Madam Chair, I would like to move that we approved a proclamation.
Can I ask a question first?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so on the, the beginning, what your first whereas, you, you put the percentages of Nevada women and of Nevada men. On the second whereas, you just put in the approximately fifteen point five million children, is that fifteen? Point five million children national, and it's just a number to me and it. Where at least the percentages were referring to our state, I mean, it is a Lyon County proclamation, so I was just. Kinda curious about that number.
Yes, I, I would presume that that is, that is nationwide, just to show the gravity of, of the situation.
Okay, good, well, can we put the wording in there to, to reflect that?
Certainly. So, it, it would read, whereas approximately fifteen point five million children nationally are exposed to domestic violence every year.
Yes, yeah, uh, that, that's better to me, it was just kinda like, okay, it was like, we're, we're talking the state. It's a Lyon County proclamation and then we have this huge number, so, um. And, and I, there was, let me see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. The eighth whereas, um. Where it says victims of violence should have access to medical. I wasn't real sure if I liked the wording in that because it, like, again, I'm just going back to the fact that it's a Lyon County. Proclamation, so when people read it, they, you know, that we declared this and so they expect certain things. Um, so. I, I understand we're only using the word should, we're not saying shall or will. Um, have access to medical and legal services, but I was a little concerned about that one because it doesn't say that. Again, whether it's the county or the state or a broad stroke, um, on that. Um, I wouldn't want somebody to, to misread this because, I mean, when it comes to the medical, we may not necessarily have. Be able to provide, I mean, I know Shayla's office does anything and everything she can and, and everybody that. Works with her and everybody that contracts with the county. Um, and individuals, uh, work very hard, um, to end domestic violence in Lyon County. Um, I just didn't want that to be misconstrued, so I, I'm just looking for a little.
Mad, Madam Chair, it, it, it's a should, so it is a broad brush.
Yeah, well, like I said, it says should, I just, I wouldn't want it to be, uh.
It's not, it's not a shell.
Understood, so. Other than that, um, yes, go ahead and please make your motion. Understood. So, other than that, um, yes, go ahead and please make your motion.
Thank you, madam chair. So, I've moved that we approve the proclamation as edited to declare October Domestic Violence Prevention Month in Lyon County, Nevada.
Second.
Here we have a motion and second. Do we have any further discussion?
Uh, yes, madam chair, Commissioner Jacobson here. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Holmes, uh, just for curiosity sake, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot here, but um, you do, uh, as, uh, I believe Commissioner Hockaday pointed out earlier today, you do a great job with grants. Absolutely one hundred percent, no doubt about it. Will a proclamation such as proclamation twenty-two here help possibly Lyon County receive grants? Maybe it's for Aces, um, or other items. Do you use this i- in any way, uh, to hit, to benefit, to benefit, uh, your grant writing?
So, uh, Shayla Holmes, Director, Lyon County Human Services, for the record, Lyon County Human Services maintains, uh, bridge and connective, uh, systems for individuals suffering from domestic violence or within domestic violence situations, but we are not a domestic violence provider. Uh, we partner with our domestic violence organizations such as DVI, um, Domestic Violence Intervention or Community Trust Incorporated. I know from our responsibilities to other of our grants such as, um, differential response and our other family support programs, a part of those grants for us in-house is to make sure that we are participating in child abuse prevention and things of that nature, which is why we bring that proclamation forward every year and really make that push, not just because it's a grant-funded requirement, but it's really important for the community to get out and be aware. I would imagine similarly that having this proclamation is an aid to our domestic violence partners. While it's not a requirement for human services funding, so to speak, it is probably very beneficial for those two agencies to have this support and backing from their commissions and city councils. I, um, would also venture to say that it is just really important that the community be aware of the issue and that we take a moment to recognize that it's something that spreads across everyone in the community and, um, in years past, I've likened it to sort of like a leaky roof, right? One, there's an issue in a house on a street and there's a leaky roof and we don't address it. For a little while, it's only impacting that family. But over a period of time, that leaky roof that doesn't get addressed eventually dilapidates the structure, condemns the structure and then starts impacting those around them. So domestic violence is very similar to that in that as a community, we have to really rally around those that are impacted because otherwise it will eventually impact us all if we're not proactive.
Thank you. Thank you, madam chair.
Any, any other, uh, comments?
Yeah, madam chair, I really do appreciate Commissioner Henderson bringing this up. I would recommend that we try to catch it the first week of October next year. Uh, since the month is, uh, you know, almost over, uh, just, uh, reading through it, it would be great if we would have made this presentation the first meeting in October.
And just to note, you can't really tell on Zoom, but I do have my purple on. So, um, any public comment on this? Seeing none, um, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, motion passes. Um, and before we get into the rest of this, I think we're gonna have to break for lunch. So it's what, eleven fifty? So, back by twelve fifty?
Um, madam chair, I'll push through.
Well, we still have the RFP to get through as well as the remainder of the contract or contract, the agenda.
I thought we met in Dayton to iron out the majority of the RFP, madam chair. Is there is that looking like a long process, I guess, is my question?
Well, it it may or may not be. I I don't know where each of you stand, so. And I'm, I'm thinking of our staff, that if we get into a long, drawn-out discussion for any reason, then they're the ones that suffer by not having lunch.
Yeah, we we have, we have two more agenda items, basically.
Okay, I'm, hey, consensus if you want to push through, but I, I just want to take into consis- consideration of staff.
I'm for pushing through.
Yeah.
You're all good. Well, then let's take a five-minute break, refresh your coffee and we'll come back and get the ball rolling.
Let's get this party started.
Sorry, I was muted. I was asking if everybody was ready. You couldn't hear me. Assuming that's a yes. Sixteen a for possible action, approve a approval of solid waste disposal requests for proposal, RFP document and contract. Mr. Haskin.
All right, Andrew Haskin for the record. Um, so after we had the last meeting, special meeting to discuss this um, in Dayton, I went through the document again and made all the requested changes that the board had. Um, so I'm gonna run through that real quick. I have a list of page numbers and what I changed on that page, so if and if I get going too fast, feel free to stop me or slow me down. But, uh, we'll, we'll, we can go through that and follow up. Um, so on page four, I added a deadline for questions and a timeframe for when the answers to the questions will be posted. Um, that was something that I wanted to see. That way we made sure we got all that stuff done. At the front end of it, that obviously I don't have the dates in there just yet because it depends on when the document gets approved and all that. On page eight, I added a requirement for senior rates for both the ninety-six gallon and sixty-four gallon cans. I know that was something that was brought up by the board, um, so made that change. On page ten, I added standards for the transfer stations as follows. Um, the Dayton Transfer Station, six thousand square feet, uh, the Mason Valley, uh, Transfer Station, eight thousand square feet. By the way, those are based on what we currently have. Um, Smith Valley, forty-five hundred square feet, Silver Springs is not one that we currently have, so, um, took a look at what we have in Dayton. Um, and expecting growth, but, um, I, I set that one at six thousand square feet. Also on page ten, transfer stations must have fencing or another type of system to prevent loose solid waste from blowing away from the transfer station onto, uh, prop- surrounding properties. I know that was something that was brought up. I said franchisee, franchisee will also be responsible for any cleanup of solid waste, which leaves the site. So that was something that wasn't in there previously. I made sure that was in there. On page twelve, I added the code enforcement cleanup plan or program that I had talked about. That would add fifty-two free dumps at the nearest transfer station, uh, to whatever project we're working on uh, with a six-yard, um, county-owned dump trailer. We don't have a dump trailer currently, but if we get one, um, that would be, you know, would be used for that and we'd have to be able to dump it once a week. Um, page fifteen and sixteen add language in the event Lyon County owns a landfill. That was something that was requested by the commission. Uh, so it reads, if Lyon County should own and operate its own permitted and licensed landfill at any time during this agreement, franchisee will be required to dispose of all solid waste at the Lyon County landfill. Should franchisee be required to use the Lyon County landfill, franchisee may renegotiate their rate schedule with the county to reflect any price differences in both transportation costs and, uh, landfill prices. So that was added in there and stop me if anybody has.
I'm sorry, what, what page was that one? Some not.
That was on page fifteen and sixteen. I think more of sixteen than fifteen. Starts on fifteen.
Okay, there we go. It was okay.
At the very bottom. You ready to move on?
Uh, hang tight here real quick. So one of, that was the one I change, um. What about verbiage, uh, if when Lyon County? Um, if when Lyon County approves it, an in-county landfill, all waste materials collected within Lyon County are to be delivered, uh, to the landfill site by all collection companies and fry and franchisees for a fee.
Um, I, I think that would be determined at that time. The fee and everything would be determined at that time and that's why it's, that's a separate issue from the franchise contract. So yes, I know, I I get what you're saying. Um, but that's why we, I put in there the provision about renegotiating the price because if the price is different than where they're currently disposing of it.
Okay, and then the final one on that, it's, it says until such time Lyon County owns and or operates, um. I, I, I mean, I don't know, Lyon County, whatever, itself own or operate one, I would just say until one becomes a, you know, if one becomes available and is operated within the county.
So I don't know that we could require a private company to use another private company for that. Um, I'd have to defer to the district attorney's office.
Okay, so if we owned it though, we could sublet it to an operator though, yeah? Okay.
Okay, A- Andrew, I have a quick question too, um, regarding the same language. So Len, uh, should franchisee be required to use a Lyon County landfill? The franchisee may renegotiate their rate schedule with the county to reflect any price differences in both transportation costs and landfill prices. Do we have an option to at least go to the table and renegotiate if, uh, we're gonna save them money?
Uh, not, not the way it reads, no. I can add, add something in there.
We should, we should be able to add that. We should both be able to go back to the table.
Yeah, I mean, if it's an increase, it's an increase, but I would hope that if we had one within Lyon County, uh, we would decrease their cost by, for travel and so forth.
So what I, what, what it will read is, uh, should franchisee be required to use a Lyon County landfill? Lyon County or franchisee, franchisee may renegotiate the rate schedule.
Yeah, we should both have the option.
That's what, that's how it would read.
There you go.
Okay. Um, moving on, but is that answer all the questions on the, okay. Moving on, page twenty-eight, I added the pass, no pass checklist for the RFP process. So essentially if a company is missing anything on that checklist, they would automatically be disqualified from responding to that. Or from, from the work process.
And again, I just want to make the comment, I I made it to you yesterday. Just really want to look at the composition, you know, pay close comp- close attention to the composition of those that are gonna be doing the, you know, evaluation process and not just all senior folks. You know, you know what I'm saying, I mean, based on our conversations.
Yep, absolutely. Um, page twenty-nine is the checklist, so twenty-eight was the language to add the checklist and then nine was the checklist. Page thirty is the score sheet. The score sheet was changed. Um, remember before we had used a weighted, uh, system? Uh, the board had requested that we no longer use weights in the scoring process, so um, we changed that and I believe it is on a scale from one to five instead of one to ten, as the board has requested.
Uh, it's still so zero to ten points each.
Oh, uh.
One through five is average and six to ten is exceptional, which doesn't make.
I was just looking at that, yeah.
I left it at ten and it, it, okay. Um, I can change that if the board wants. I, I actually think that having more points there is probably better, but, uh.
Yeah, no, that's right, but I was like, I mean, it is zero to ten. But you've got one through five is average and six to ten is exceptional. That doesn't make any sense.
It's a, that's scoring on a, a scale of one to ten on, uh.
Five would, five would be average, though. Plus, more than five is exceptional, less than five is.
Okay, yeah.
Just, yeah, one, one being the least acceptable and ten being exceptional.
Okay.
Something like that, just.
I can clean that up. That's not a problem. That's just a.
My, my, my.
Madam Chair, I mean.
Uh, madam chair, if I may, having dealt with rubrics, I think if we just make sure that we, everyone realizes that one is low, ten is high. I don't know that we need average or exceptional language in there.
Exactly.
Okay, it was.
And I want to address, because in the workshop, we had a consensus on, uh, just a one to five scoring and now we're talking a one to ten. So, what is the, the pleasure of the board? One to five or a one to ten?
I think one to ten. I, I know we did the one to five, but I think one to ten would allow more differentiation and, you know, a little more drill down.
I agree, one to ten.
Yeah, I wasn't here to argue the point. I just wanted to point out what was said in the workshop, so.
All right, page thirty-nine clarified what happens if the award is protested and the protest is upheld. This was an issue in the last one. So essentially, if the protest is upheld, meaning it's granted, um, the governing body must either pick the next lowest responsive and responsible bidder even, oh. Hold on, did I copy the wrong thing on my notes?
What page?
No, no, page thirty-nine says, even if they did not file a protest or the governing body may start the request for proposal process again. And I need to change a word here. No, I, I don't. I read it wrong, but it says, let me, let me start over so for the clarity. It says, if the protest is upheld, that the governing body may either pick the next lowest and respond, responsive and responsible bidder, even if they did not file a protest, or the governing body may start the request for proposal process again, whichever is deemed in the best interest of the. So provide some fle- flexibility there, which we didn't have.
Negates the argument that, that was made the last time that the one company was just out of it completely because they didn't file a protest. Okay. I agree with that.
Yeah. Um, I caught an error on, actually, uh, Commissioner Hockaday, uh, let me know that there was an error on page forty-seven. Um, the date will be updated, uh, to October twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, instead of October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one. That was just a holdover from the last, um, the last go around, so.
If anybody's gonna catch it, it's gonna be Dave.
It, it was, yep, yep. So, uh, he, uh, gave, gave me call and let me know that, hey, there's a mistake. So, um, page fifty-seven adds language about, uh, both senior rates to the contract. Um, same language that was in there, um, in the RFP, because this is moving on to the contract section. Um, page fifty-eight adds transfer station standards into the contract. Page sixty adds.
Hang, hang, hang tight real quick. I'm not, we lose, we stopped numbering after fifty-one.
No, if you keep going, um. Okay, yeah, you're right. I'm sorry. So the, the numbering changes in the contract, but if you look at the document, the PDF document, it is, uh, a.
So just give us a chance to get there. We'll find it. What's, what's the topic?
It was on, uh, the senior rates. I'd have to, I can pull up the document to figure out.
Yes, this is a sample contract, though.
This is a sample contract, yes. So I, I wanted to make sure it was in there.
I, I, I get that.
One, two, three, four, five.
It, it starts, oh, yeah.
You have a six-point something or?
Hold on, hold on, yeah, that's right. I have it in front. Page six.
There we go.
Hey.
Page six middle of documents.
Which means that page seven adds the transfer station information. And then page nine adds the code enforcement. Those were the only changes to the contract.
Okay.
Actually, I, I have one more change to the contract that I missed in my notes. It was page, uh, page eleven and, uh, it talks about the, uh, solid waste disposal, where it has to be disposed of and that adds the language that if Lyon County was on a landfill. So I will clean that up as well. And then, um, there was one other thing that didn't make it into the draft that will have to be changed and that's a state-required standard language regarding, um, Israel that has to be in there. And that's a state required standard language regarding, um, Israel that has to be in there for all contracts. I just forgot to put it in there. Realized it yesterday as I was going through my notes. So, um, that it's standard language. That we'll just, we'll add it there.
Will we add that in there? Will we add that in there?
We will, we will.
Okay, so is that everything, Andrew?
It's all I have.
Okay, so, um, any commissioners have anything on their list that they feel that was missed? Anything they want to change, update?
I have a, a question.
Okay, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. And it might just be a formatting error on page fifteen.
Of the.
Of the.
RFP or the contract?
The RFP.
Okay.
Okay, where it go, where it's, uh, E carts and containers.
Oh, I see. It is a formatting error.
And then, collection frequency should be F. Is everything else will change? Is it? And then I do just have one question, and this is just a, a general question about carts. Uh, uh, you know, what is the life expectancy of a cart?
That is a good question, and I don't.
We've got some people back there that may know the answer.
Or. Can we, I don't know if we can, can we do that? Maybe under public comment.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I'm just curious what it is, because where, where I'm going with that is whatever life expectancy is. If a customer has had a cart for that long and then whatever happens to it, it needs to be replaced, it should be at no cost. That, that, that's my only comment there.
So just still a question on landfill. If we are ever able to get a landfill, you know, in the county operated by the county. Um, I still would like bruvage in there that directs the, the franchisee to use that within our county. Instead of taking it out of county.
As far as if it was not county owned?
No, it, no, obviously, it's gonna be county owned or county operated. I mean, so, uh, you know, I would like to keep our garbage here. And I think it would also keep, I mean, keep, you know, keep it down, but.
Want to keep our garbage here? I like that.
Yeah.
I, you know, and I, I did put the district attorney's office and they felt the language was in there was sufficient for what you're.
I, I mean, I want to continue to take it to Love Lock or something, you know, I, I just.
Yeah. They, it said that they would be required to, to do that if it was.
I don't, yeah, I'm not seeing where it's.
It says, i- if Lyon County, but this is the RFP, it's the same language. Franchisee will be required to dispose at the Lyon County landfill.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, if, if somebody else were to own the landfill, then it would create a problem because you can't, I don't think we could. Force somebody to use a. Going back to your cart, um, I mean, we could, we can put something in there.
Uh, it, it's, so. It, it was just a question. It's not, yeah, I, I don't, I don't think it's, we need to change it. I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean, I think typically if the cards be, and I mean, when we get to public comment, others may, may comment on it. But I think if a card is being used properly, appropriately, it's not too likely to. To see a lot of wear and tear, but.
Well, you, you haven't seen my cart.
I say, was yours parked behind your motorhome last year?
Thank goodness.
Fair enough.
Yeah, and, and sometimes it's not so much the, the wear and tear by the, uh, property owner. As the wear and tear from the trucks that pick it up. Because I, I know I've had one for a couple of years with a good size split in it. Um, and my father did too, and, and it was literally split because. The trash truck, when it picked it up, yeah, kind of damaged it. So, uh, so, yeah, the life expectancy is. Not necessarily just by the property owner.
Absolutely true.
Well, geez, you guys, as far as I know, I've had the same ones since I moved in.
Well, the bear has been taking care of many chumps on mine. Okay, every Wednesday night, it's chewing on something. So, yeah, it, it's still usable.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, so anything else that we've missed?
Madam Chair, if I may, um, I just want to thank Andrew for his work on this. Well done. And I also want to thank fellow commissioners. For meeting, uh, in Dayton that evening and, uh, all the input we got from the various, um, providers. Uh, they are the experts. I'm not an expert, so I just wanted all the experts that were in the room that night providing some feedback as well. So I thought that was, um, an excellent, uh, use of an evening, um, to speed up this process today. And, uh, that's what I have to say. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yeah, I, you know, I actually have to agree with that. I think that was one of our most productive workshops that I can remember. Um, been through a lot of workshops on different things and I believe that night was, uh, the, the most productive.
Madam Chair, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with the RFP with the aforementioned changes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? So at this time, I want to take public comment. If you're here for public comment on this item, please line up against the wall so Andrew can take count because I can't see you.
Nobody is running.
No one for public comment in chambers.
We, we didn't do anything wrong. They don't want us to change nothing. They're all good. All right. Hey, Andrew, any hands on Zoom that I'm not seeing?
None on Zoom either.
Okay, well, seeing none on public comment, uh, all in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? There you go. Good job, Mr. Haskin.
Chuck up a win for Andrew. No, Josh, not you.
Don't be picking on Josh.
No, he's back there smiling.
Okay, well, it looks like I, I completed all of that, so we're gonna, for the moment, we're gonna recess to reconvene as the Willow Creek. General Improvement District Board. With that, we will start with public participation. Same rules apply. Anybody with public participation on something that's not under this agenda. Um, you can have your three minutes at this time. Do we see anybody? Seeing none, eighteen A for possible action, approve an amendment to the wastewater agreement with the city of Yarrington. For the operation of the Willow Creek GID to allow Lyon County to collect the privilege to connect fees directly. Mr. Bruketa.
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioners David Bruketa for the record. So, um, this is, we have an agreement where, uh, Yarrington runs and maintains the wastewater treatment plant. Collection system out there in the Willow Creek GID. And under the agreement, um, they collect the privilege to connect fees. And then, uh, once those are collected, uh, during that month, then they'll transfer them over to the county. We recently have implemented some new software as part of our, uh, business permitting process. Gives us the ability to collect the fees directly. So this just eliminates one step in the process. Yarrington, I've been in communication with the Yarrington City Manager and the, um, Public Works Director. They're supportive of this. So, um, you know, we recommend this gets approved. There would be just one administrative change. Um, and that is, this was supposed to go to the Yarrington City Council last month. Um, it slipped through the cracks on their end. It's gonna go in November. On the first page, it says this agreement would take effect November first of twenty twenty two. And the change would just be, would, just to make it simple, it'd become effective the first of December twenty twenty two. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Bruketa? Hearing none, can I get a motion?
So move, Madam Chair, second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? See any hands, Andrew?
No public comments.
Okay, uh, all in favor signal by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, most, motion carries.
Thank you.
We are now gonna go to public participation again. Seeing none, we're gonna adjourn to reconvene as the Lyon County Board of Commissioners. Uh, agenda request, Commissioner Henderson.
None at this time, ma'am.
Commissioner Gray.
Negative.
Uh, Commissioner Hockaday.
None.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to request that, uh, um, we get with Travis Peak and place him on the next agenda to address concerns. I would like to keep a. Good working relationship with all of our contractors so that we continue to get the lowest bids possible. So if we could just get, uh, with Peak Brothers and, and, uh, see what we can do to get resolution. Thank you.
Okay, and I don't have anything at this time. So Commissioner Comments, Commissioner Jacobson.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to wish, uh, everyone a great Nevada day. And, uh, as we celebrate our great state, um, thank you.
Commissioner Hockaday.
Uh, I'd like to, um. Say something about, uh, Aaron Lopez's Civilian Advisory Board meetings, the third Monday of each month. Uh, we had a couple of attendees the other night and I really want to emphasize that it's a, it's a great opportunity for. Our advisory board members to get up to speed on a lot of the meeting information. Uh, the way to conduct meetings, this one on Monday night was extremely helpful. And she is putting in the time and I'd like to have all of us kind of emphasize that training. So that more members will show up for it. I believe we're looking at probably the next meeting in January, but. Um, it was very, a very, very good meeting and I think people are missing out if they don't. Get on Zoom and, and attend those, uh, training sessions. Also, uh, we have a new fire chief in, in Smith Valley, Chief Nightingale. And, uh, congratulations to him for being selected to be the, the fire chief. And one last thing would be on neighborhoods. You know, we, we've, at least I'm getting a lot of information from people about speeding on streets. And dirt roads and, uh, you know, had someone crash into one of the property owners fences and take off. Uh, we just need to be a little bit, uh, more concerned with the way we behave in our neighborhoods. So, you know, we'll, the county tries to do everything they can. We are kind of handcuffed sometimes by the law. And what the government can do, but, uh, we do need to get some people out there that are gonna be more conscious of their. Their actions within our own neighborhoods. So that's it.
Nevada freeze, as she did.
Um, while Miss, while. Chalice froze, uh, I would like.
Can you hear me now?
Mr. Hockaday brings up a great point. I would like for Mr. Hawk, Commissioner Hockaday to maybe invite the new chief. Uh, to one of the next meetings so that we can meet him. That's awesome.
Okay, so can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I don't know what happened with the screen there. It was really weird. You guys froze too.
I say you, the froze or you had a seizure.
Yeah, well, you guys, you, you, you don't know what I saw. You're like, okay, anyways, uh, Commissioner Gray.
Uh, I have nothing at this time. Um, just have a great, great Nevada birthday. And, uh, we will see everybody in November. At least for one meeting, hopefully.
Yeah, 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 whatever. Anyways, Commissioner Henderson.
Go Astros.
Wow.
Okay, anyway, so I just want to comment that we had our, uh, Silver Springs Founder's Day this last weekend. And I just want to, you know, throw out, you know, thank yous and kudos to everyone. It was a great event. Wonderful parade. Um, Adam Lax Salt came out and actually walked all of Fort Churchill, uh, shaking hands and talking to people. Um, we, uh, had participation from Central Lion Fire. I want to thank, uh, Sheriff Honeywell and his group for coming out. Uh, they even participated in the cornhole tournament. And, uh, we, we just had a great bunch. We had an actual DeLorean.
No, no, that was not a DeLorean. It was a time machine.
Well, okay, we had a time machine, DeLorean. Anyways, um, Captain Sam Brown came out. His wife was a judge. I mean, we, we just had some, we had a great bunch, uh, Northern Nevada Veterans Coalition. You know, just on and on and on. So kudos to everybody for showing up and making it such a great event.
Announcer also.
Well, I was kind of leaving that out, but okay, Commissioner Gray was very instrumental in being our announcer.
Was a good time.
For the parade. So, and yes, you did a good job. Thank you. Uh, and then real quickly, I just wanted to let everybody know so they can get it on their calendar. We will be having our tree lighting. Um, December tenth in Silver Springs this year. So we've already got our date. And so hopefully, everybody can plan that, plan ahead and be there. And then, of course, Commissioner Gray already mentioned this Saturday night is our masquerade ball, um, and in Dayton at the Dayton Golf Course. So, um, with that, uh, do we have a closed session today?
No.
Oh, thank you.
Public comment. We've got one more public comment, I'm being told.
Well, I know, but I wanted to know if I had a closed session. All right, um, so number twenty three, public participation.
Yes, I'm Tom Smith, Wellington, Smith Valley. Madam Chair, at the last, uh, meeting, uh, during, or at the end of the discussion about the lands bill. You made, uh, gave the county manager direction to produce the documents. That, um. RCI had produced in regards to the last bill. And I didn't see anything on the agenda about that, no discussion about it. And I was wondering where your request or new direction by may stand at the moment.
Okay, I, you know, I normally don't address, uh, public comment, but I will because that was requested. Um, two, two things. Um, we had a change in county managers. Um, we have an interim county manager, which I have, Mr. Haskin and I have talked about that. He is aware. Of what, uh, was to be brought forward. And then also anybody that wasn't aware. Um, RCI's offices, uh, burned down last week. So, um. They, not that they don't have access to the maps, but they've had quite the week getting through the situation. So, um, I just want to say, you know, Mr. Haskin, I'm sure you'll be reaching out, um, as soon as that, uh, mapping and everything is available for us.
Absolutely.
Comment about that?
Uh, you got one minute and twenty seconds left on your time.
Thank you. That, the contract to provide that information, uh, was, uh, completed. Uh, in July of this year. And it seemed to me that, and they had billed for their services and no doubt has been paid. So I would think that the map and all of the other things they had to provide legislative texts. And outlines on presenting the draft bill would be in the hands of the county at this time. So there shouldn't be any delay relative to the, that building, which was most unfortunate. And I'll take a few minutes. I had an opportunity to go to that building some time ago. And it's not a building, it's a house. That's a historical house and a tremendous loss to the state. So my question, I guess, is, is there a, a map and legislative, uh, documents, uh, here at the county?
Okay, um, again, like I said, we don't normally address. I just wanted to let you know where we, where we stood. And, uh, Mr. Haskin, who is our newly appointed county manager, will be addressing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, for the record, my name is George Eddie Lorton, and I just had a couple quick comments, and I would like to see follow-up on the lands bill as well. But then, uh, on the RFP, I didn't hear a part about a performance clause, which before Ken Gray. Had mentioned that, and I thought that was a great idea, to where you can also have in there to be reviewed at any time by the. Commission here, to where if they're not performing, you should be able to review that RFP at any time, and then that is a performance clause, so. I know you don't answer questions under this time, but please make sure that's in there, so if you have any further issues with whoever gets that RFP. There is a performance clause in there, because I think it's necessary, especially if waste happens to get it, or big companies, then you have to have. A way to go after them, and it's pretty open by doing that, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, um, yes, Commissioner Gray.
Can I please address that comment, Mr. Haskin?
Uh, go ahead.
So, Mr. Haskin, I, when we talked yesterday, I got confused, we're talking about, uh, you know, about customer service and performance and stuff, and I should have drawn a differentiation, and yet that. You know, if we can get a performance clause in there. Um, I, I don't know, just food for thought, talk about it later, you don't need to address it, but. That was, yeah, that was my, that was my mistake.
Okay, um, we're still on.
Maybe it should be a failure to perform clause, or failure to maintain performance, or something, uh, would be better wording for it. So I'm done, thank you.
Okay, um, we're still on public comment, do we have anybody else in chambers? Andrew, do you see any hands on Zoom?
No hands on Zoom.
Okay, um, and then. Andrew, real quickly, I, um, before we adjourn here, I just had one quick question, um. So now that we, uh, approved the RFP today, uh, do you have a timeline laid out? That maybe you could share with us real quick?
Andrew Haskin, I don't have a timeline just yet, I will get that written into the document, I do believe there is performance, um, standards in the. In the contract, though, I mean, they would have to, um, I mean, it's like any other contract, so if they're not performing the contract, they would. Okay. They're, they're in breach, so, uh, I don't. I, I.
I read something in there, I just couldn't remember what page.
Yeah, so. Um, before we adjourn, I also want to thank, uh, Chairman Keller for working, uh, through the lunch today, that was, I think, um. A very well, well-done, uh, exception, thank you.
Yeah, I, it actually worked out well, I think everybody's still gonna have a chance to go get lunch in a timely manner, um, so, thank you. Um, okay, so Andrew, you'll get back to us on that timeline.
I will, yeah.
All right, um, if we are done, Commissioner Comments, public participation, looks like no closed session, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting at twelve thirty-seven.
Andrew. Do you want to click, close the meeting?
Oh.